City Council, Ojai Development Agency's successor agency to order for May 28, 2013. Welcome, everyone. Thank you for being here. Your comments are always very helpful to us when we're making our decisions. If anybody wishes to address the council on any items on the agenda or in the public communications time, I would request that fill out one of these green speakers cards and give it to Rhonda who can forward it on to me. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Lara?
Here.
Councilmember Clapp?
Here.
Councilmember Smith?
Here.
Mayor Protam Strobel?
Present.
Mayor Blatz?
Here. Councilmember Lara, could you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please? Please stand. Begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we don't have any presentations tonight, and I'd like to know is there any of our commission members here to present anything to the council tonight? I don't see anyone. So we'll move on to public comment. Public comment is a time set aside during the meeting for members of the public to address the council on items of city business other than those which are scheduled agenda items. Matters raised at this time may be briefly discussed by the council, but for other than emergency items, no action can be taken. Persons wishing to address the council are requested to pull out a speaker's card prior to the council reaching this point in the agenda, and please keep your comments to three minutes or less. And I only have one card so far. Greg Gamble. Greg, welcome. Nice to see you.
I'm Greg Gamble, the Executive Director of the Ojai Valley Land Conservancy, and I just came with a special announcement tonight, and that is that we've -- the Land Conservancy has just issued a press release that we have successfully completed our Valley View project and are closing our campaign. We overshot our $650,000 goal, so we're extremely excited about that. And I know the city council wasn't aware of this because this is just something that's come up in the last couple of weeks, and so you weren't aware of that when you put the agenda item on to consider the $20,000 contribution for this project, but unfortunately, we've closed the campaign. But I wanted to come to the podium to thank the city staff and the city council members and the Parks and Recreation Commission, who have all expressed their support for this project, and I know that you all know that it's an important project for the community, and we're excited about it, and we're excited for you. And so we're very excited to work together on other projects, but I respectfully ask that you not consider the item, the $20,000 gift, because we've met our goal.
Congratulations, Greg.
Thank you very much.
We're all looking forward to it. Councilmember Smith?
Yes, I just wanted to mention, I spoke with Greg, maintenance -- this is going to be a trail sort of like Shelf Road, so this will require maintenance. What part of it will be in the city of the trail?
All of it. The entire park is in our city.
So I really encourage the public and anyone who has been meaning to donate and hasn't yet to write a check for the maintenance of the trail, of the Valley View trail. And if it's the city that it behooves to maintain it, should it go to the Ojai Valley Land Conservancy or the city? That's a good question. Greg, if it went to you, would you be able to make sure that it goes to the maintenance of the trail, or how would that work?
The press release was issued today, and so we're anticipating, hopefully, that the Ojai Valley News will pick this up in their Friday issue. Technically, we're accepting donations through the 31st, through the end of the week, which is the end of the month. And so the checks, any checks that come in the next couple of days will count towards this. I just, we're over our goal, and as far as the $20,000 item, that it's definitely not needed. But if any individuals wanted to contribute, then we would certainly count that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Greg. Anyone else wanting to address the council on items that are not on our agenda tonight?
I haven't mentioned yourself.
All right, seeing no one, we'll move on. All right, consent calendar items, 1A through 1H. I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor Blatz?
Yes.
I just would love to abstain from item H because I've received monies from one of the consultants in the last 12 months, so.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I'll abstain from item 1C, minutes of the May 14 meeting. I was not present.
All right. Any other items that need to be pulled? No? All right, I'll entertain a motion on item.
Wait a minute. I have to make sure if the meeting that I wasn't present is in here this week. It doesn't appear to be, so we're fine.
All right. I will entertain a motion on consent items, numbers 1A, B, D, E, F, and G.
So move. Second?
Call call.
Lara?
Yes.
Clapp?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Strobel?
Yes.
Blatz?
Yes. Now I'll entertain a motion on consent item number 1C.
So move.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Lara?
Yes.
Clapp?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Strobel?
Abstain.
Blatz?
Yes. And now I'll entertain a motion on item 1H.
So move.
Second?
Roll call, please.
Lara?
Abstain.
Clapp?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Strobel?
Yes.
Blatz?
Yes. All right, moving on to the public hearings portion of our agenda. Item number two, this is a 2006 to 2014 Housing Element Implementation Program Phase Two Zoning Ordinance Amendments. Mr. Clark?
Mr. Mullein will be making the staff report on this item.
All right, Mr. Mullein.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and good evening again, City Council. This is a public hearing for Phase Two of the Zoning Ordinance Amendments for the 2006 to 2014 Housing Element. So the council, one of your previous meetings, one of your recent meetings, looked at the Phase One of the Housing Element Implementation Program, and this is the follow-up ordinance that implements all the other programs of the housing element that were adopted and adopted by the city and certified by the state late last year. Phase Two of the Housing Element Implementation Program includes programs geared towards preservation, retention, and special needs housing. The Planning Commission conducted their public hearing on this item on April 17, 2013, and recommended adoption on a unanimous vote. And their resolution recommending that the city council adopt the ordinance is included in your administrative report as attachment B. The current version of the ordinance delays implementation of Program 10 Inclusionary Housing to the next Housing Element cycle for further evaluation of statutory and case law, including those regulations and case law related to the Palmer versus the City of Los Angeles court decision. And this came up in the Planning Commission public hearing, and the Planning Commission was supportive of deferring action on that until the next Housing Element cycle, which is soon upon us. So there is no inclusionary housing requirement as part of the Phase Two ordinances. That will be dealt with in the next Housing Element cycle, and I want to make that clear because there were some concerns from the public of some of the specifics of that program. There is, however, the density bonus program, and that's, I'll get into that in a little bit. Also, action on Program 22 in the adopted housing element, which relates to sustainability, has been postponed because we felt that the development of these green building principles would really take a little bit more time than we had at this point in the process, that we wanted to have the ability to gather a lot of input from the Planning Commission, the public, before we implemented that program. And there's nothing that requires us under state law to implement that program right now. We can do that as we uncover from the Housing Element cycle that seems like we've been very actively involved in since I arrived about 14 months ago. So the administrative report has a summary of each of the Phase Two programs and highlights some of the key features and issues for each of those programs. The attachment A is included, just as a reminder, this is actually verbatim from the adopted housing element, 2006-2014 Housing Element. Attachment A is not for consideration or any action by the council. It's just there to guide the council, remind the council what we committed to when we adopted the element, and the state is going to be holding us to that. So what we have in attachment C are the actual ordinance amendments, just similar to the last public hearing for the Phase One. This is where we've identified the changes that we need to make to our zoning code to implement the programs that comprise Phase Two of the housing element. And then the third attachment is the Planning Commission's resolution, which I mentioned before. So just a little bit of introduction to the programs that are in Phase Two. Programs 11 and 21 deal with capacity preservation and anti-displacement, and these are geared towards preserving affordable housing opportunities that might otherwise be lost through downsizing or demolition. So these are situations where, right now, we have the capacity for, where we actually have units that are displaced or destroyed. We have, in the attachment C, one of the sections there prohibits zone changes that have the effect of reducing residential development capacity unless the resulting loss in affordable housing potential is offset. And again, these are all things that we said we were going to do as part of the housing element, and we're just, we actually make the changes to our zoning code to reflect what we committed to doing. In another section, Section 10-2904, that is, that requires that specified housing lost to demolition or conversion be replaced in kind. Program 12 pertains to the density bonus provision, and this probably got the most attention, other than the inclusionary housing, which is, again, now off the table, but the density bonus probably got the most attention during the Planning Commission review and from the public. And the density bonus provisions that we have in the proposed ordinance simply reflect existing state law. There's very little latitude to deviate from what the state has adopted and said that cities and counties must comply with to meet density bonus requirements. And we already have a density bonus program in our existing zoning code. We are updating it to reflect the recent changes in state law because between 2002 and 2008, the state density bonus law was extensively revamped, and it now ranges, the trigger or the accommodations for density bonus now range from a low of a 5% commit from a developer to a high of 35% of the units being restricted at some level. The 5% is for, obviously, for very low. And the number of regulatory concessions now ranges from 1 to 3. These updated state requirements are included in Section 10-2907 of the proposed ordinance. The next batch of programs, 14, 15, and 16, pertain to housing accommodations, persons with disabilities, and the homeless population. And again, as with state density bonus law, a series of legislative changes dating back to 2002 require accommodations for persons with special housing needs. The collective outcome of those statutory requirements consists of treating agricultural employee housing as a permitted agricultural use in the agriculture and open space zone districts, which, as the council would remember, there's very few of those properties zoned for agriculture or open space in the city. Recognize that special needs housing constitute residential uses and may be permitted in all residential districts as long as they're subject to the same development parameters that apply to traditional housing. Allowing shelters as permitted commercial uses in the business professional zone or the BP zone with a cap of 27 emergency shelter beds. So if the city ever met the cap, then there would be no more allowance for emergency shelters in the city. And again, that is just restricted to the business professional zone. The fourth item in this batch of programs is accommodating all other special needs housing with a conditional use permit. And the fifth item is instituting an abbreviated approval process when making reasonable accommodations for persons with disabilities. So again, lots of change at the state level in terms of the requirements to make accommodations, and that's what we're reflecting in the proposed zoning ordinance amendments. Programs 17 and 18 relate to the city's growth management ordinance and resource constraints. Programs 18 and, 17 and 18, in combination with Program 1, expressly promote the development of new and more reliable baselines relevant to air quality, traffic, and water. These efforts rely on collaborative efforts with other agencies, and we have focused the zoning amendments because of the need to spend funds to update these studies and to collaborate with other agencies. The focus of these programs is really not, is really something that is included as clarifying exemptions to the Residential Growth Management Plan and reorganizing the single and multifamily housing allotment categories into one. The third factor is streamlining the annual allotment process. Fourth is creating a special allocation pool into which unused allotments would accrue and be used at the sole discretion of the city council. And then finally, extending the Residential Growth Management Program, which is currently due to expire at the end of this calendar year, all the way through the next, the end of the next Housing Element cycle, which would be October 1, 2021. And so the Residential Growth Management Plan is one of the tools that the city has put into place to control the rate of growth in the city, and it's been very effective over its history. The main change here is that previously, we had an allocation of about 18 units a year, and it was a use it or lose it. If those units, if that allocation wasn't allotted for in that year, wasn't utilized by developers coming in with residential projects, then it just expired. But the change to this would allow the unused allocations to accumulate in a pool that would not be automatic. It would be subject to city council discretion. Should some great project come along that the city council wants to approve that would exceed the Residential Growth Management Plan on a year basis, you'd have this unallocated pool of units that you could draw upon. So it's a tool for the city council to exercise some discretion in reviewing a really outstanding project in the future. And of course, as the economy picks up, we may have less of a remainder of unallocated units as more interest occurs in development. So Program 19 was the, is the fifth batch of programs that Phase Two of the Implementation Program addresses, and this was related to the design review process. And a lot of the changes to the design review process were actually part of the Phase One, where we had the development standards for the special housing overlay, we had development standards for the village mixed use, and a lot of, we embodied a lot of the policy direction from our general plan into development standards to guide developers with those types of projects coming forward. But one of the things that the Planning Commission wanted to add was to reflect that the city has an adopted complete streets policy. The Planning Commission felt it was important to augment the design review, to have some discussion and specific standards that would apply the complete streets concepts to projects as they came forward. So that is in the proposed ordinance, a reference to the complete streets concepts and some illustrative graphics. So in summary, staff is recommending that the ordinance be introduced for first reading and returned for formal city council adoption on June 11, 2013. And again, the attachments that are included for your use this evening are the excerpt from our adopted housing element, which sets forth the roadmap for what the implementation program should be doing, the actual implementation program, which is attachment C, which are the changes to the zoning ordinance that reflect those programs, and then finally, the Planning Commission's report and recommendation. And the Planning Commission has, in that resolution, there's an Exhibit A, which was the one small change that they made to the proposed ordinance, and it was just to essentially address a holdover where there is a reference to inclusionary calculations, inclusionary housing, which is, as I mentioned at the beginning of the staff report, no longer part of the program, so they're recommending that we delete that reference from one of the sections. Other than that, they felt that these changes reflected well what the city committed itself to in the housing element, and there wasn't really a lot of public comment or controversy. There was some comments from Mr. Miley. He had some questions on how the density bonus table worked, and he and I met last week, and we went through the density bonus table, and I think he has a better understanding of how that works. And that is one of the more confusing aspects of the zoning ordinance, so if any of the council want me to go through that, I can. But that concludes my staff report.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mullein. I just have one question. Are you talking about paragraph 10 on 2-11, the inclusionary housing? Is that what you're saying is not included in this?
That program is going to be deferred to Cycle Five, to the next Housing Element.
But the one right before it, 9, the amnesty program, that's still part of this?
That's correct. That was part of your Phase One.
Okay. All right, any questions or comments by council?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
In the page 2-5, which is the goals, objectives, policies, and it's also the document where the programs are numbered. Is that accurate? Okay. Is this program referenced and incorporated in the proposed ordinance?
Program number one on 2-5?
Any of the -- let me tell you where I'm going. In the proposed ordinance, we have the title, and then we have programs 11, 12, 14, 15, 16, 17, 18, 19, and 21. But within the body of the ordinance, they're not referred to by number. They're not referred to by program number.
That's correct.
So I would like to either have those numbers explained or taken out.
The numbers in the staff report are just for the council?
No, I'm looking at the ordinance, page 2-27.
Mayor Protam Strobel, those, the parenthetical phrase at the bottom of the title of the ordinance?
Correct.
That referenced those programs, that is just to point back to our housing element, our 2006-2014 Housing Element.
Okay. And that was my question. Does the ordinance incorporate that document by reference? Because nowhere in the ordinance are the programs referred to by number. They're referred to by title. My suggestion is to take the numbers out or define them.
If I may, Mr. Mayor, remember, we're looking at the, in the whereas's. We're talking about the whereas's of the ordinance?
No.
And the title.
The title, the last line of the title.
Oh, okay, the title.
2-27.
It's not functionally, it doesn't have any functional purpose, other than it's informational.
That's my --
It can be in there, there's no harm, absolutely no harm. In fact, I'm more of the school of thought to put more language in there if it helps people understand, and when you go back historically, what were we talking about, since the general plan has program.
But for the average person looking at our ordinances, when they see a string of numbers like this, which are not defined within the ordinance, how are they going to know to go to the source? So my recommendation is either take the numbers out or define them.
It's one other point. Remember, the title and the recitals do not wind up in the municipal code. They're only in the ordinance.
Okay.
They won't, so when you go to the, when something goes online to the municipal code, none of this will be seen.
These numbers will never be in the municipal code?
No.
Okay.
How about the numbers as they're referenced, beginning on page 2-5, 1 through whatever it is, 17, 18, 19, 20? Are they, are they going to be referenced anywhere?
If I may, no, they wouldn't be referenced because the general plan is the larger policy document, and the zoning ordinance implements those policies. So they're two separate documents, but they, we only reference the general plan, and we make findings that we're doing this in conformity with the general plan.
Okay.
But the body of the municipal code, anything folks would read online, doesn't, has neither the title of the ordinance nor does it have any of the recitals. It just begins with, it would begin with, it's just the language that you find beginning with after the now, therefore, on page 2-28.
So then it's through some sort of enacted regulation that these programs are implemented?
The ordinance, that's what the recitals are actually for, the recitals allow us to go back historically, look at the actual ordinance that tells us why we're doing this ordinance, to implement these policies of the general plan.
Okay.
Okay.
But then, other than the record of tonight's meeting, how do we know that the inclusionary housing is out of there?
I guess we could take that one out, if that's what the only issue is.
Okay.
All right, one, the second, the second whereas, page 2-27?
Yes.
Will that be codified in our municipal code? Okay. Because for the person who goes back to the original ordinances, to me, it's confusing. That's why I initially said either take the numbers out or define what they are.
It --
But if it's not in the municipal code, it isn't, it isn't that big a deal, except I still feel that it's unnecessary. If we don't need them, let's don't put them in there.
I would, my recommendation is leave them, this allows us, we historically go back and read this document, we know, we have the, we have the housing element and has these programs in it. So then this ordinance, we can see what we're tending to do.
But that's what I'm getting at.
Yes.
Now, we, staff, council, whatever, would know, we know what those numbers refer to if we go back to the original ordinance and our book of ordinances. But for the average person who looks in our municipal code, they will not be there, and there will not be a historical reference. Correct?
I guess so. I'm, I'm sure I agree with you because we have, I mean, I'm following, we have the general plan, the current, the adoption of plan has these programs in it. So there are, if you want to do anything, we would say is Programs 10 through whatever of the 2005, or the 2006, 2014 general plan, if you want to do that. We could, we could say that, but that does define them, and that's the reference you go back to. So I think they should stay in, we can make that slight change to make people.
Here's what I meant.
Yeah, I'm not following, I guess.
I want the public, when they read our municipal code, which will probably be online.
Right.
I want members of the public to be able to have the same access to historic documents as we, our staff, have because we actually went through the programs. We know these numbers refer to the goals, objectives, and policies. Staff, council, know what these numbers go to.
Well, one thing I've seen other cities do is retain the adopting ordinance as part one of the links under the housing element. So under the city's general plan, you have a link to the housing element, and it has the actual final adopted housing element. It may have the letter from the state certifying the housing element, and then it would have the implementing ordinance from the council. So in that respect, the community would be able to not only see these programs referenced, but have the housing element right there. They could go to this, to this attachment A, which is, which is right out of the housing element, it's just an excerpt from the housing element, Section 3 of the housing, the housing plan, and know what those programs are.
Let me see if I can convey what I'm after. If we're going to use numbers, what is Program 11? It has a title. Somewhere in the ordinance, or somewhere, I would like the title of that number that goes with that number. So if we're going to use numbers, let's define them. If we're not going to define them, let's don't use them. We've used numbers all the way through this, the housing element process, and I think I'm wanting to get this clear before going to the next cycle. I have actually come in with index cards so I can remember the name of the number and the program that go together.
Or in it?
So I'm asking that when we do the next housing element or cycle, in our staff reports, in our ordinances, if we're going to use a number, I want a list defining what that number, what program that number represents. If we're going to use numbers, define it.
Ms. Strobel? May I say something?
Sure.
I agree. When you start referring to those numbers all the time, I'm always going, which number is that? What's that referred to? A glossary would be really nice.
Yes.
I agree. I think a glossary would be nice, so you can refer back. I think a glossary would be nice, so you can refer back, oh, that's the amnesty program. Oh, that's this, that's that. Because she's right. I go, okay, what's number 10? Then you're flipping through this huge document trying to figure out what it is.
Can't, let me ask you, can't you do, can't you do it as a simple footnote by title only, as to what program 11 is in a footnote?
We can, I was just, we can intersperse it in the title also, if that's what you mean. If that's what the issue is, we don't know what title program 10 is, then we'll put a title to it.
But I don't want to change the ordinance so that we have to bring?
No, no, again, all of this, all of this is in the ordinance document, not in the municipal code. Because the municipal code is a whole body of ordinances. You're only changing some sections of some ordinances. It doesn't go in as all of itself. So, but this is the official document. Someday, soon, folks will be able to go online or come into City Hall and actually see this document online or on computer. Right?
Okay.
Well, and if we scan the document and someone uses our scanned ordinances, then they're going to see these numbers, which, and so I want them to find, if we're going to use numbers, give them a title.
We can do that, and it doesn't require any reintroduction or anything.
Okay. Now, this is, this is really just giving an ordinance to those items, which we've already approved as part of the, a part of the housing element, which is what you have to do, and then you codify it. But is there, along with this, there's no priority. There hasn't been any priorities assigned to any of the items in the staff report, such as the amnesty program. Correct? I mean, this ordinance doesn't set a priority. It just out, it just lays out those particular programs that were part of the housing element.
It brings our municipal code into compliance with our housing.
Right. And so when are we going to have an opportunity, if at all, to discuss, you know, which one of these, which one of these programs is identified by the numbers in the staff report, which we think are important to work on first?
So when we were talking about priorities at the last council meeting, we did say that working on the amnesty program was a priority, and the council agreed. But if you'd like to have a more complete discussion of the priorities within the housing element, we could certainly bring that back.
Well, principally, the one that I'm most concerned about is the amnesty program, because I think it's very important.
Okay. Well, we've, yeah, we have, we have received direction from the council already to give the amnesty program priority this summer, and we actually think that's important, because we need to demonstrate for the benefit of cycle five that we're making progress, and that's an area where we can do that. So, yes.
Any other comments or questions of the council?
I just have one question.
Laura?
Mayor Blatz. I understand and appreciate you wanting to clarify, because a new council member, I do see your point in wanting to clarify that ordinance, so people could read it a lot easier. It's still confusing, though, if you're first time seeing it. So my question, it has to do with program, what is it, allotment? It talks about creating the special pool. Is there a number of pools that are going to be created, or is, who's going to create those also?
Right now, the, any unallocated number of units that are allowed on our growth management ordinance just expire at the end of the year. So what would happen here is if we have 18 units a year in our residential growth management program, if only 12 houses get built in the calendar year, then there's six. There's an unallocated portion of six, and that would go into basically a track, planning staff would track the number of units at the end of each year that haven't been utilized, and would keep, it's just a number. So at the end of the first year, maybe it's six units, by the next year, maybe it's 16 units, and then at some point in the future, maybe we'll have 40 units in the unallocated pool. And then some great project comes in, and it's 36 units, and the city says, gee, would really like to approve this project, but our residential growth management program only allows us to do 18 units a year. Well, with this, with this special pool, you could actually utilize those 36 units that have built up over several years and approve the project, but it's entirely at the discretion of the city council. So it's, it's a, it gives the city council flexibility to entertain projects that may be supported that otherwise wouldn't be compliant with our 18 units a year program.
Just for residential projects, right?
Correct.
Okay.
Any other questions or comment by council? No. This is a public hearing. I do not have any speaker's cards. Is there anyone in the public wishing to address the council on this item? Sure, come. I'll get to you next.
Judy Murphy.
Hi, Judy.
Judy Murphy. I'm Judy Murphy, 218 Grand Avenue, Ojai, and I'm here tonight on behalf of the Ojai Valley Democratic Club. I'm really glad to hear that you have made a priority out of the amnesty program, because that's what I'm here to talk about tonight. The Housing Element Committee of the Ojai Valley Democratic Club is concerned about the lack of affordable housing in Ojai. We looked at it carefully, and last week got figures for how many housing units were actually available. Of the categories, in the very low, lower, and moderate housing categories, there were only three housing units available in the lower three categories, and nine in the moderate categories. That was a mix of condos and houses that were already in escrow. Forty-five percent of Ojai are renters. In 2009, that accounted for nearly 1,000 dwelling units. As of last week, there were only 15 units available to rent, and only one of those was in the affordable category. And that, as it turns out, was a one-room unit for $600. Excuse my voice. I've obviously got the cold that everybody seems to have. With only a year to get the second dwelling amnesty program implemented, the Democrats are urging the city to promote and to expedite applications for amnesty permits. We understand that there are hundreds of unpermitted dwellings in the city. Ojai must get them permitted to protect the affordable housing that we already have, and to avoid the possibility of code enforcing them out of existence. A couple of years ago, there were 50 property owners that took advantage of an amnesty program with a sanitary district to upgrade their facilities, thereby becoming eligible for permit compliance. Looking at this list, for candidates to start our second dwelling amnesty program would be a very good place to start. And lastly, we support the concept of an ombudsman. How and when this person is selected is very important. We would like to see the planning commission offer their criteria for hiring, and we strongly suggest hiring an individual who lives in Ojai, understands our history, shares our values, and understands our unique character. This should be done very soon to assist the homeowners through the very complex process. Thank you very much for your attention.
Thank you, Judy. Joel, did you have a comment?
Evening, council people. The other day, the Associated Press revamped one of their words they use in their AP Style books. I have a few copies of this. And the words they revamped were illegal alien. And what, their reasoning was behavior is illegal, not people. People by themselves. You people aren't illegal, just sitting here. Your behavior might, so they got rid of that term. So I have an issue with the word amnesty, because if I hang my window wrong, you know, or it got in a post-war house in Ojai in the 40s, it was just improperly put in, or it was before the code was even enforced, it's not illegal. It's just out of code. You're not going to come and arrest me for that, I hope. But to frame the issue is amnesty, right, right out of the gate, you guys are just making it, all these people illegal. And you need to not make the people illegal. We run this, you don't run that. So just context, you know, AP, illegal alien, we're not illegal.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to address the council? Yeah, Dale.
Thank you. Judy Murphy said everything I wanted to say.
Okay. We'll put an exclamation point there. Bill?
On the Democrat, excuse me, Bill Miley on Signal Street. During the Democratic Housing Committee meetings, we talked about that issue of amnesty, the word amnesty. We kind of liked the word unpermitted as a substitute. We would suggest that.
Okay. Anyone else wishing to address us? Anybody want to move to close the public hearing?
I'd move to close the public hearing.
Second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. I'll bring it back to council for further comments or questions.
I do have a comment. Just to, just to understand what we're doing for this item, this item actually has nothing to do with the amnesty program, because it's item nine, right?
That's, it's program nine, that's, that's correct. And I was going to introduce on item four on your agenda tonight, that we got a letter from the, from the Housing Element Committee of the Ojai Valley Democratic Club. So I think the comments that you just heard on the amnesty program are really geared towards that item, not item, this item.
And I think that added to our confusion when the insert of attachment A was added to our staff report for this item, because it included all the items of the housing element, just not the 11, 12, 14, 15, 16, 17, 18, 19, and 21. So I think that was our confusion. Other than that, I mean, I would like, I don't know if we could address those comments right now, or if we should just wait for item four, because most of them had to do with amnesty.
It would probably be more appropriate under item four, I would imagine, wouldn't it? Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I'm ready to make a motion if there's no other comments. I would move to introduce ordinance number?
828.
Which is an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Ojai amending Title 10, Articles 9 and 20 of Chapter 2, and Article 4 of Chapter 6 of the Ojai Municipal Code related to affordable housing supply, housing impediments, and conservation and rehabilitation components of the 2006 through 2014 housing element of the Ojai general plan.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion?
I need to add to that motion, and, well, I'll just add to it. And I'd also ask, move to ask the city clerk to read the title of the ordinance and approve a motion to waive further reading and pass the ordinance to second reading.
Okay.
So second then?
Second, and as amended. Any further discussion?
I just have a comment. We depend on our recommendations to frame our motions, and our recommendation for the motion suggests implementing programs 11, 12, 14, 15, 16, 17, 18, 19, 21. This is what I am resisting. No more numbers, unless they have a title. And that's the end of my complaining on this item.
Any, any further comments or discussion? No? Roll call, please.
Ordinance number 828, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Ojai, California, amending Title 10, Articles 9 and 20 of Chapter 2, and Article 4 of Chapter 6 of the Ojai Municipal Code related to affordable housing supply, housing impediments, and conservation and rehabilitation components of the 2006-2014 housing element of the Ojai general plan. Councilmember Laura?
Yes.
Clapp?
No.
Smith?
Yes.
Strobel?
Yes.
Blatz?
Yes. All right. Moving on to our next public hearing, which is item number three on our agenda, which is the reintroduction of an ordinance number 825, adding Article 16.5 to Chapter 2 of Title 10 of the Ojai Municipal Code entitled Exterior Lighting Standards, and that's TA12-02, and reconsideration of the companion resolution entitled Exterior Lighting Compliance Policy. Mr. Clark?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the city council. Before I turn it over to Mr. Malane for the staff report, I wanted to indicate that we sent you a memo by email indicating that Councilmember Clapp had received a communication talking about changes to the state building code that would be mandatory changes that relate to lighting standards that will be published in the next month and a half, and could have some impact on this ordinance. And Councilmember Clapp had suggested that the council may want to continue consideration of this until those are published, and we have a chance to analyze them and determine what impact, if any, they have on the ordinance. As kind of a footnote to that, we did meet with the, with our plan checker and building inspector this afternoon, and discovered that actually there have been some amendments to the existing building code relating to commercial lighting standards, which will probably be carried through, and they do measure lighting in a different way than we proposed to measure lighting in this ordinance. So knowing that now, I'm thinking it probably is the wise decision to not introduce this tonight. However, if there are other things that you would like more information on, or that the public would like more information on, it would probably be a good idea to get those on the table, so we can research those at the same time.
Okay. Yeah, one of the, one of the things that I had some concerns about with the lighting ordinance were discernible standards, so that when I saw the situation where the state was going to be coming out with some standards, I felt the same way, that we probably should continue it.
Yeah, and apparently, they're going to change how they measure light as well.
Oh.
So it's, in nine months, this ordinance would become obsolete, so, after all this work. So I think, I think we really do need to.
Continue it?
Continue it.
Okay. It is a public hearing. Is there any, I don't have any speaker's cards on this ordinance. Is there anybody in the public wishing to address us on this ordinance? No? Okay. We'll continue the public hearing along with this agenda item. Yes?
I do have some comments on this.
Okay.
It was, it was outlined in the staff report that the continuing theme was that this not be retroactive. And I still support the ordinance, because it does not suggest that it's retroactive. However, back to the resolution, which is where I was stuck in the first place. Page 3-17. One, two, three. The third whereas, I'm just going to read the part I think still sounds like it's retroactive, and that is, starting at the middle of the second sentence. "The implementation and enforcement are necessary, however, it is important to provide for a period of education." That suggests to me that we are making it retroactive. So I'm, I think, in that whereas, even when we redo the ordinance, if we stopped it at "A lighting code is a method for a community to express its expectations for quality lighting in dark skies," and then start with the next whereas, if we just took that out completely. The same with the very next whereas, the second sentence, "With an initial one-year emphasis on voluntary compliance." That suggests it's retroactive to me, whether it is in fact or not. I know in the ordinance, it, it lists the exemptions, and an exemption is a lighting fixture that was installed prior to this. But if we're going to use this resolution as our guide, I would still like more clarity. And those two spots are actually the only ones, whoops, one more, three places it still says to me it's retroactive. Section 4, page 3-18. I would like it, I'm going to read where, until I would like it to stop, and then I'm going to, factors which should be Factors which should be given particular consideration include, and then our colon and our list. But what it says is, during the emphasis on voluntary compliance for the first year of the new lighting regulations, as well as for subsequent years. So, I personally would like all the things that suggest to me it's retroactive removed.
Mr. Mayor?
That's it.
Councilwoman Clapp?
The, the title, it's called Title twenty-four, Smart Lighting Standard. And interestingly enough, in it, they require retroactive compliance. It says, the most important change in the two thousand thirteen Title twenty-four standards is that many of the retrofit projects will be required to meet the standards. Spaces in which less than ten percent of the light, pardon me, lighting is being changed out, or buildings in which fewer than forty ballasts are being replaced are exempt, but otherwise, all new lighting must meet not only the lighting power density requirements, but also most of the controls requirements, including deming.
Okay. And our ordinance says the same thing.
Yeah.
Our ordinance also includes, if there is twenty-five percent rehab, rehab, remodel, et cetera, et cetera, that the exterior lighting has to be...
Yeah. And Title twenty-four requires anything over ten percent.
Okay.
Right.
And our ordinance said twenty-five.
So, so that's why we do need to bring it back, because we need, I think, to make sure that we...
Right. Keep in mind, though, the key to it is that if you're not going to do anything, and, and I can understand the wording being confusing, but our ordinance doesn't require anybody to do anything if they're not going to be changing out fixtures. If you're going to change a fixture, well, then you have to do something, but you don't have to change out your fixture, other than you have to turn your lights off at a particular time, perhaps.
Ten o'clock.
But there's no requirement of that. And that's no different than what that reads, that if there's going to be any retrofitting or, or remodeling, then you have to put in new fixtures. That's not really retroactive.
The only difference is...
We're saying twenty-five percent, they're saying ten.
Ten percent, yeah.
If the state is ten percent, then that's lower than what we were proposing at twenty-five.
And the interesting thing is that there's requirements about deming when it's not in use, and it's a pretty complicated one. I just started scouring through it. I really don't understand it myself. But it seems that, that there, there's going to be some conflicting issues with this ordinance compared to Title twenty-four.
Then I would agree, we, I'd rather see us continue it.
Yeah.
Okay.
Mayor Blatz?
Yes.
I, I did have one more point that I wanted to point out was Tivoli Lights. Now, I want to state that before, I had no really opinion about whether they should be in there now, but talking to a lot of merchants and, and trying to do my own research, I found that I'm not sure if that necessarily adds to light pollution. It's more of an aesthetic thing, it's more of a, do, do I like it, do I not like it? And I have an issue really supporting that if it's not adding to light pollution. I think we, it's, we have right now a design review process, and, and I think that's a great process, in my opinion. I just don't want to make, I, I don't want to outband it just because we don't like it aesthetically when, when it, people's tastes are different. So, I mean, I, I would, I would really, I would want more information to see if they really do contribute to light pollution glare, really, safety issue. If you guys could do some research, that would be great.
All right.
Mr. Mayor, one, yeah, one procedure, let's go. So, if you want to continue the meeting, we got to do it to a date certain, where you simply, we can take this off calendar and then direct staff to renotice, it's, it's only a published notice for this public hearing, and renotice it when they're ready.
I think that's probably the smarter thing to do.
More inclined towards the latter.
So, is that our direction? Do we need to have any kind of a vote on that, or is just direction that it's going to go off calendar for now, and it'll be renoticed when it comes back on?
That sounds like direction.
Is that okay? All right. All right, moving on to the next item. That concludes our public hearings for tonight. Moving on to discussion items, item number four is, the ordinance is implementing Phase One zoning ordinance amendments for the two thousand six, two thousand fourteen housing element implementation program. And we actually started talking about this a little bit back under item number two, but I'll turn it over to Mr. Clark.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the City Council. This is the second reading and adoption of the ordinance that you already introduced at a prior meeting. Normally, we would list it under consent, but since there was a split vote on it, we put it as a discussion item, and I suppose that's good if there's people who want to talk on it. So, Mr. Malane will give you a very brief overview, but primarily, we'll be responding to questions.
Okay, Mr. Malane?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And really, that's all I had to say on it. The, it's a very brief staff report, and I think it's just, we wanted to bring it back because of the split vote.
Okay, any comments, questions of staff, of staff by the council?
I just can't resist it. We have programs two, three, four, five, six, eight, and nine. I won't go through that whole thing again, but...
Okay. The record will reflect that it bothers you. Anybody, I, Judy, I have your card, Judy's, yeah, there you are, you're hiding back there. I have you as a speaker's card under item four. Do you want to talk to us again?
No.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Ms. Murphy. I, that's the only speaker card I had for item number four. Is there anyone else wishing to address the council? No? Okay. I'll bring it back to the council then, and entertain a motion or further comments or questions.
I'll make a motion, Mr. Mayor. Adopt ordinance number eight two-six, which would implement programs two, three, four, five, eight, and nine of the oh-six to fourteen housing element. An ordinance number eight two-seven, which would implement programs six and seven of the oh-six to fourteen housing element, by asking the city clerk to read the titles, titles of the ordinances, and approving a motion to waive further reading of the ordinance and adopt the ordinances.
Okay.
Second?
Any further discussion? Madam Clerk?
Ordinance number eight twenty-six. An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Ojai, California, amending various sections of Chapter Two of Title X of the Ojai Municipal Code related to implementation of the two thousand six, two thousand fourteen housing element of the Ojai General Plan. An ordinance number eight twenty-seven. An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Ojai, California, amending Articles two, seven, and twenty of Chapter Two of Title X of the Ojai Municipal Code related to creation of the SPL overlay zone for implementation of the twenty-six, two thousand fourteen housing element of the Ojai General Plan.
Okay, roll call?
Laura?
No.
Clapp?
No.
Smith?
Yes.
Strobel?
Yes.
Blatz?
Yes.
Passes.
All right. Item number five on our agenda, another discussion item, is Formula Business Ordinance Amendment Request. Mr. Clark?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the City Council. Again, before I turn it over to Mr. Malane, I'd, I'd like to make a little bit of a clarification on this item. Under our Formula Business Ordinance, if a retail establishment has the criteria that defines it as a formula business, it can only be approved if there's a conditional use permit allowing it to be approved. Also, in the downtown commercial district, it can only be approved if the floor is two thousand square feet or not. And in the case of Star Market, which is outside the commercial district, if it's ten thousand square feet or not. You have a request before you from the owners of Star Market that talk about waiving the conditional use permit requirement for the downtown commercial district. I would submit that that's probably not exactly what they're asking for, or even if that is what they're asking for, what they need. I, I think one thing that they need, or would like to have, or would like to have the council and the planning commission consider, is some ability to transfer their store to another grocery store that might be a chain grocery store. And I would suggest that that should be with a conditional use permit so that everybody who's concerned can be here to testify about it, and a decision can be made with, with the benefit of that testimony. But I, but I don't think they need, even though they've asked for waiver of the conditional use permit requirement, what they really need is the ability to have a larger footprint than the ten thousand square feet that's currently provided. So, I don't know if that clarified things or made it more confusing. I'd be glad to try and elaborate further, or just turn it over to Mr. Malane to, to give the staff report.
All right. Well, let me just make a comment. It seems to me that in certain, under certain conditions, and that is if you don't have twenty, if you have less than twenty-five feet of frontage, and in the downtown area, if you're less than two thousand square feet, that if you propose a business which is defined as a formula business, the only way that can be approved is through a conditional use permit. However, if you have the twenty-five, if you have excess of twenty-five, or seven, I think it's twenty-five feet of frontage, or in certain instances, more than ten thousand square feet, if there's a business identified as a formula business, it is, it is unable to do it even with a conditional use permit.
And that's the problem.
Okay. So, it's, it's, in looking at this situation, the question becomes, does the council want to consider a situation in which a formula business would be allowed in a substantially larger building with a substantially larger frontage, where currently, it's not allowed even with a conditional use permit? Correct?
And, and I would define that even slightly narrowly by saying, in an existing building. So, I don't think we're talking about new buildings, we're talking about reused...
Okay. So, we're, we're being asked to consider a situation where a formula business would not be approved, or not be...
Possible.
Possible, even with a conditional use permit. Correct?
Correct.
Okay.
But I, but I do think that's confused, because the request that they made is for something different.
I, I agree with you. I agree with you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
And I would like to, to clarify my belief as to why this is on here. When I, I'm one of the council members that asked that it be placed on here. My reasoning for that was Representative for Star Market had asked staff and had mentioned it to the city council, at city council meetings, a, more than a year ago now, the question of whether or not we would consider amending the Formula Business Ordinance. That question was never answered because it would have to be a decision of this council to answer it, and it would have had to have been agendized for this council to act as a body and answer it. And so, my intent for having this placed on the agenda was so this council could decide whether or not they wish to make a change to our existing Formula Business Ordinance.
Okay. Thank you.
So, so just to add that a little bit, if the council wants to do that, then we do have to take some language to the planning commission and have a planning commission recommendation, which would then come to the city council. So, tonight, really, all you would be doing is deciding whether or not we take something or another to the planning commission.
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Malane?
Well, I'll be brief, because I think a lot of this was covered already, but just to review how we got to where we are today, Representatives of Star Market have expressed concerns with the city's existing Formula Business Ordinance, and have requested that city staff bring forth specific changes to the ordinance. The request to revisit the ordinance was reiterated by Mr. Tom Olson of Benton, Orr, Duval, and Buckingham, the attorney representing Star Market on this issue at the council's March twelfth, two thousand thirteen meeting, under public comment. In response to this request, the council instructed staff to prioritize work on the requested ordinance amendment. And then, more recently, two council members requested that the, that this request by the Representatives for Star Market be discussed by the full council prior to having staff initiate work on the requested ordinance amendment. As such, the, the item is being brought back to the city council for direction from staff. As, we've noted, the city's Formula Business Ordinance has been in place since December two thousand seven, and then it was, it had a revision in March of, of two thousand twelve. The March two thousand twelve revision reduced the threshold for the definition of a Formula Business. And Representatives of Star Market were involved in the public hearing process for that revision back in two thousand twelve, and requested that an exception to the ordinance be provided for Star Market to allow for consideration of certain future uses at the market's location. I, I did see Mr. Olson here tonight, as well as representatives from the, the Star Market ownership, and Mr. Clark already pointed out that the request that was provided as Attachment A, or Attachment B, the revised, oh, yeah, so Attachment A was a letter from Mr. Olson that we received in April of two thousand thirteen, and then Attachment B was the suggested change to the ordinance that, that Mr. Olson provided, and it's on the third page of that Attachment B where, where the new language is. And Mr. Clark already, already pointed out that the specifics of this request would not provide a conditional use permit to consider this in, in Star Market's case, but it would just say, no conditional use permit is required. And then, I, I believe their, their intent was to have this exception apply to their property, but their property is actually general commercial in the land use designation. And the, their, the language that they've provided here was for the downtown commercial area, which is the area closest to the arcade. It's a very small area within the city, and that has the, the smaller frontage and the smaller square footage requirement. So, you know, if we, we are direct, if staff is directed to bring this forth to the, to the planning commission for public hearings, and then ultimately to the city council, then obviously, we'll, we'll make recommended changes, we'll confer with Mr. Olson and, and try to get agreement on the language. But the way it's drafted right now, I just want to make it clear, this, there, there's some problems here, and staff doesn't support the way it's drafted. But the decision item before you tonight is not the merits of the specifics of the language, it's just directing staff how to proceed. Now, there was, there is an option, you know, typically for a, an ordinance amendment that would benefit a particular applicant, the applicant would pay for the zoning ordinance amendment, and, and would submit an application along with an, an application fee. That hasn't happened yet, and I think that hasn't happened yet because the Star Market representatives were involved in the process back in March of two thousand twelve, and there is an indication from the city council at that time that, that this item would be further considered by the planning commission. So, that's perhaps another thing for the city council to weigh in on, should this be something that's just further staff time devoted to the Formula Business Ordinance, if the direction is to carry this forward, or should, should city staff be asking for an application form to be filled out and a deposit filed with the city? And that's all I have to think.
Thank you, Mr. Malane. Any initial comments by the council? Questions of staff? All right, we do have Mr. Olson here tonight. Tom, you want to come forward? Nice to see you.
Thank you. I have a few comments I had prepared, but basically, the gist was, we're glad to kind of see this starting to go through the formal process. I'll indicate to Mr. Clark and Mr. Malane that we are certainly not married to the language that I presented, nor to that as a particular approach. The objective my client is looking for is when they decide that they have gotten tired enough of running a grocery store and want to be able to get out of the grocery store business, that someone else could come in and buy that property and start a store in there that is comparable in size, not changing the footprint, not becoming a hundred thousand square foot Walmart. And the way the ordinance is phrased right now, I think they would have to raise the building. There is nothing that they could put into that property, and that's on one assumption, but I think it's a valid assumption, that the market for someone wanting to buy, to buy a grocery store is a fairly limited market, and the likelihood is pretty good that whoever that would be, would be a formula business within the definition within your code, whether it's a smaller enterprise like a Bristol Farms, or a Fresh and Easy, or something like that, it's probably not likely that we're going to have a single person walk in and say, hi, I'd like to start a mom and pop store. So, that's really been the focus. And however you want to approach it is fine from our standpoint, it's just to allow us to be able to have my people move forward. And if that's done by providing for a CUP, but not having the CUP be something where if someone proposed to come in with the same kind of operation, that they would be turned down automatically. We'd like to think someone could go in running the same kind of operation and not have huge hurdles to get through in order to do it. The staff report was the first time I'd heard of the zoning code text amendment application. If that's something we need to complete, I can certainly coordinate with Mr. Malane getting that. If there's fees associated with that, we will pay as good citizens what needs to be paid in order to have that processed. But the city council has, at each of the meetings where we've raised this issue, expressed the thought that they all along knew there was going to have to be some amendment or modification done to deal with this, and I believe there's been reference to one or two other operations in town that have the same problem that we do. I apologize for my voice, it's been a long day. At any rate, those are the comments we wanted to make, and if... And if there's any questions that I can answer, we'd be happy to do, and I'm happy to work with Mr. Mullein, Mr. Clark, and anyone else.
All right, thank you, Mr. Olson. Any questions of Mr. Olson by the council? No? Thank you. This is a discussion item, and I do have speakers' cards on it. The first speaker's card is from Kenzie Newfield. Kenley?
Kenley.
Kenley Newfield. Hello, Kenley.
Good evening, City Council. Uh, Mr. Mayor. Kenley Newfield, 308 Drown Avenue, Ojai resident. And I do want to just, first of all, state that this is not a problem as Mr. Clark has presented it. This is an issue, and, but this was a, an ordinance that was drafted intentionally over a period of a year in which there were, I think I spent the entire year in this room. Carol remembers that. It wasn't always easy, but we spent a lot of time here discussing this ordinance. And the way that the language is written was done with our eyes wide open and with an awareness that it would impact certain businesses in this town, specifically Star Market, Rains. And these are large businesses. We knew that when we discussed this here, when we passed this ordinance, when we had people from the community come and speak. The message was very clear, and this council approved it. I was able to collect over 700 signatures from the community that I brought here to have this initiative. It was an initiative initially, and then it became an ordinance that the city took a hold of and made into their own. And this was in 2007. And I think that the, the sample language, even though it's been indicated it's not a good sample language, I think it's, it's completely unacceptable. If, if we come anywhere close to that kind of language, we have a major problem. And then we do have a problem, rather than an issue. Ojai has a unique character in which we're trying to protect. And that's what we spent that year discussing. And that's why we have this ordinance, to keep Ojai the way that it is in terms of its business community. We spend a lot of money in the Tourism Visitors Bureau that markets this town as such, and I think it's important that we continue to do so. If we were to, at the time when we discussed this, the reason why we weren't able to make exceptions for the Star Market and Rains was because the city attorney stated clearly that it wasn't possible to make exceptions just for one business. It needed to be a, a rule that would apply across the board. And that was why we have the language that we have here. And so I believe that there are, there, there are opportunities for these businesses to find buyers. Maybe not as a grocery store, but maybe as a grocery store. There are other models that exist on, out there. I think the Bristol Farms is a really interesting one, and though I don't particularly care for it that much. They do own Lazy Acres in Santa Barbara, and they made no changes. It would not meet our definition of a formula business, even though Lazy Acres is owned by a very large corporation. I didn't know it was a small company. So I think our answer to Mr. Starr's request tonight is to deny his petition, to modify the ordinance as it stands, and not to send it to the Planning Commission. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker's card is Leslie Ferraro.
Hi, Leslie Ferraro, 209 East Eucalyptus. I'm neither for or against chain markets. I'm more for just the average Joe, being able to find someplace that's affordable to buy food. Right now, those options are basically Star Market and Vons. And I think Star Market kind of provides a good source of competition for Vons. So if Star Market does leave, I would just hate to see that location just disappear as a market. So that's just really my only, my only concern is just, right now, I'm an average wage earner. I do a lot of my shopping either at Vons or down in Ventura. I can't afford to buy my clothes here in Ojai. I can't buy any of my home goods in Ojai. I do all of that down in Vons, or down in Ventura. And I hate to do all of my shopping down in Ventura. If Star Market disappears and nothing goes in that's similar, Vons is my only option, or Ventura is my only option. I try to spend as many of my dollars here in Ojai as I can, but my dollars only go so far. So that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Marsha Thompson.
Actually, Marika Thompson.
Oh, I'm sorry, Marika.
That's all right. Marika Thompson, 922 Pleasant Avenue. I grew up in Ojai, I raised three kids in Ojai. And I've stayed in Ojai because Ojai is a very unique, special place. And everybody here has worked very hard to keep it that way. It's a reason why people live here, it's a reason why we get a lot of tourists and visitors that help sustain just our whole economy. The other thing that really stuck out for me is that Star Market is like the first thing you see when you come in from out of town. Like the first real Ojai spot. And so if it's a Fresh and Easy, or a Ralph's, what are we representing to people coming into town? And what are we representing to ourselves? I know a lot of people have been talking a lot about getting a food co-op started in Ojai. And a couple years ago, I looked a lot into starting a nonprofit grocery store. It's actually a really new idea, there's only one in the United States right now. But it's a super progressive idea and super exciting. Talking about affordability, I think that's important to everybody, whether you have a lot of money or not. You don't want to spend all your money on overpriced groceries. I think this is actually a really exciting opportunity for Ojai because we now have a location that would be perfect for starting, you know, something exciting like a food co-op or a nonprofit grocery store. And if not, I think as Kenley spoke, a lot of effort was put into writing that ordinance in the first place. And it's unfortunate that it'll be hard maybe to find a buyer, but I think there will be someone who's interested in that space. It may take some time, but that comes with being in Ojai in the territory of, you know, what we've all chosen to do here. So anyway, I support not having a chain store put in where Vons, I mean, I'm sorry, where Star Market is right now. And just to kind of make that clear right now so that they don't put a lot of effort into lawyers and, you know, just a lot of time wasted. So, anyway, that's my two cents. Thanks.
Thank you. Pat McPherson?
Pat McPherson, 1111 North Montgomery, here in Ojai. I'm one of the hundreds of Ojai citizens that came to this council chamber time and time again, six years ago, to get a formula business ordinance passed. I sat in these chambers till midnight, along with Carlin Strobel, Carol Smith, and others, to make that a reality. We listened to all the arguments, we heard the pros and cons, we heard the legal opinions. All of these things, this community went out of its way to do. And as a result of that, we created an ordinance. I passed out for you to look at a, a picture of me when I was in Shanghai at the same time. And it was a picture of me in the ancient city in Shanghai with a Starbucks behind. And that was published in the Ojai Valley News. And the example was, what are we going to do in Ojai to make it unique? And I think we've done that with our chain store ordinance, or I call it chain store ordinance. Kenley Newfield did an excellent job researching and writing an ordinance and was a seller of a citizen to advise the council why it was best not to go forward with his ballot measure that had the required signatures for a special election. During this time, I don't ever recall Mr. Starr voiced any concern about the formula business. I have nothing against Terry Starr. He's my neighbor. I like him, I talk to him, and I purposely buy from his store because I believe in the formula business ordinance and I believe in shopping locally to help my neighbors, like Terry and his family. I can understand why Mr. Starr would want to sell his store to a formula business, but I don't think he has explored all of the options, and I don't think it's up to us to do that for him. It would be a slap in the face of me and the hundreds of people that came to make this, make the formula ordinance if we were not to, it would be a slap in the face if you changed it at this time, let's put it that way. I ask that you not open up a Pandora's box because that's exactly what would happen. And you advise Mr. Starr tonight that the city of Ojai is not interested in changing the formula ordinance as his attorneys has requested. Thank you.
Thank you, Pat. George Berg? No? Okay. That's all the speakers' cards I have. Is there any else wishing to speak on this agenda item? Sure, come forward.
Hi, Kathy Cluff, 122 East Ojai Avenue. I was also part of that process, and we worked very hard on that chain store ordinance. We should be very thankful to Kenley for all the work that he put into it. There was a lot of due diligence done, and no one can deny that. As far as businesses being affected, it is true that businesses will be affected. Coming as the president and owner of The Oaks, we are one of those main businesses that would be affected. And the reason why we support this, as far as keeping Ojai chain free, is because Ojai is our backdrop for The Oaks. And we market that backdrop, we market the unique value of Ojai. In our language, we talk about we're a town without a Starbucks. And it just sets that theme for people. My big concern is you make an exception with Starr or any other business, that again, just opens it up. Giorgio's becomes Subway, Rains becomes The Gap, Ojai Roasting becomes Starbucks. The Oaks becomes Holiday Inn Express. And then what does our downtown Ojai look like? Nothing that we have tried for so long to preserve. It becomes just like any other community. And that's not why we live here, that's not why we work so hard. And again, I, I know personally that, yes, this affects our ability to sell our property and to primarily sell our business, just like it does Starr. We put a ton of effort and money into building a brand and creating business. And I'm not a huge proponent of having the government tell me what I can do with that hard work. But again, I'm a member of this community, our business is a member of this community. And so from that standpoint, we're willing to take that risk and say that we have to get creative and we have to look outside of the easy way of saying, it's a grocery store, what's the harm of it being a Ralph's? It's just another grocery store. And again, that means that Giorgio's is a sub shop and it just becomes Subway, just another sub shop. I think that it's a very bad decision for Ojai, and I feel very strongly that you cannot make an exception for one business based on size, location, years in business. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to address us on this discussion item? All right, seeing no one, I'll bring it back to council for comments or questions of staff. Anybody want to start? Councilwoman Strobel?
I'll make a comment. I was absent the last council meeting because I had used the opportunity of a wedding in North Carolina to take a 6,000 mile drive across the country and back. One of the things that I was aware of while I was driving is how much I appreciate Ojai not having a series of chain stores. As I drove across the country, it was almost like instead of towns, we now had these little pockets, or strip malls, of chain stores that constituted a town. And I, I didn't enjoy seeing that. I really appreciate Ojai and how we have kept it. I appreciate the fact there is no chain stores here.
Thank you, Mayor Proton Strobel. Yes. Councilwoman Clapp?
I recently was in Napa. And they have, and Kenley has his iPad there, look up Oxbow Market in Napa. It's a redone ferry building on the river. And it's not a large building, but they have divvied it up into small units. They've got a spice shop, an olive oil shop, they have some restaurants. They have some gourmet food item stores. They have a, a grass-fed butcher. And it's divvied up so that this building has been able to accommodate local agriculture, local cottage industries. And it's an extremely viable, beautiful marketplace. And it is packed every time you go in it. It's exciting, it's vital, it's invigorating, and it supports local small business. Something I think is really a wonderful thing because it's really hard as a small food company to have any access to market your products. Because when you go to a large grocery store chain, they want slotting fees. If you want to, if you want to sample your product, you've got to pay to sample your product in the store. You have to pay for advertising. You, you pay as much as $1,000 per item to have a slotting fee. It's an incredibly expensive process to get into a regular grocery store chain. So something like this, in a town that is so vital when it comes to local cottage industry, would be an incredible addition to our community. And it doesn't have to be a chain store. So as far as it not having any other use than a chain store because of its size, I just wanted to bring that up. Because the reality is there are creative ways to make a large building into something that's really vital and really beneficial and economically viable in a, in a community of this size. That being said, I am not in favor of changing the chain store ordinance. I think it's served our community well. I'm proud of this town for being strong enough to step forward and say we are going to continue to be the unique, wonderful community we are. And I will always support that, and I would not want to undermine that by modifying the chain store ordinance.
Councilwoman Smith?
Thank you. I shop in Star Market all the time. I'm hoping to continue to shop in a locally-owned grocery store that's there. However, not a Ralph's, not a Vons. You brought up something about Lazy Acres being part of a bigger chain, but it's individualized to suit that town. And I understand Mr. Starr is, will be limited by what he can, who he can sell his property to. But I, I would love it to stay a grocery store, that was more of the Lazy Acres model, or a small independent grocery store. I know Mr. Starr carries a lot of Springfield brands, which is the brand that caters to small grocery stores. I am not in favor of changing the formula business ordinance. I'd love that to continue to be a grocery store. It serves our community very well as a general grocery store. If it was to become smaller shops, then all we really would have would be either West Ridge Market and then, then Vons. So I, I wish Mr. Starr the best in when, if and when he wants to sell his property. But I certainly am not in favor in any way changing our formula business ordinance to allow for a chain grocery there. Thank you.
Councilwoman Laura?
Yes, I would like to start off with the question, just to reiterate what Mayor Blatt said with the 5-5 exception, I mean, the number six. Basically, if Mr. Starr was to sell his grocery store, no one really could qualify for a formula business there because of the size of the building, is that correct? So, so no, meaning no grocery store could ever be, become a formula business? It just disqualifies them?
You could have another independent.
Independent, okay.
Store, doesn't necessarily have to be a grocery store, fill that spot, but it, it couldn't be a formula business.
Okay. All right, well, I, I just, I, I appreciate everybody's comments. I too grew up here in Ojai, and I think it's a unique value that we have that we don't have chain stores here in Ojai. So I absolutely, I, I agree with my fellow council members about all their points. And I, I think that if we were to make an exception of any type, we would just be open to and subjected to possible legal lawsuits, whatever. It, it's just really hard just to please one. And I appreciate Kenley and, and forgot your name, sorry, from The Oaks, Kathy, coming and expressing why you're supportive even though The Oaks is impacted. So I, I, I'm not in favor of changing the, the formula ordinance, and I, I just appreciate all your comments. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mayor Proton?
I would like to make a motion. I would like to make a motion based on what I've heard, so that it goes on record of the position of this council.
Okay, we can do that at the end. I just have a couple of comments, then we'll come to it. Sometimes you look at a situation as an elected official and we are in charge of protecting a very unique community. And sometimes the decisions we make in order to protect the community are difficult, particularly if we look at individual, individual business people. And the, and the formula business ordinance clearly affects large businesses in town. It would affect Star Market, it affects Rain's Department Store, it affects The Inn, it affects Vons. Vons would not be able to put another formula business in there if they wanted to leave town. It would also affect other, other businesses that if they wanted to change, such as what used to be Coast to Coast Hardware, which is now, I believe, True Value or Ace?
True Value.
That would be, that would not be permitted now, nor would Jersey Mike's. They could be perhaps permitted with a, with a conditional use permit. But when this ordinance was drafted, it was drafted very specifically because we didn't even want the opportunity for any of the large properties to even with a conditional use permit, be able to have a sale to a chain store. And the reason for that is pretty clear and when we, when we even made the criteria easier to qualify as a formula business a year or so ago, it's because it really, when you look at these, these chains, the chain stores, and when they come into a community such as ours, forgetting about the fact that we're charged with, with protecting the uniqueness of Ojai, which probably is our overriding reason for saying we don't want to change it. But when you look at what happens to a community when these chain stores come in, they actually weaken the local economy because they're, they actually are sucking the lifeblood out of the, out of the small business people that are in town, which really make our community as strong as it is. And ultimately, it erodes the character of our town. And that's the one thing that we have to be more careful about than anything. And it's as, it's as Kathy Cluff said, it affects The Oaks, this ordinance. But it affects The Oaks far more negatively without this ordinance than it does with the ordinance. Because people come to Ojai because it's unique. People don't want to see another chain store across the street from The Oaks or from the museum. They just don't. People tell me all the time how, what a breath of fresh air it is to come to Ojai and how it is when they, when they're here, because they don't have all of that. It doesn't look like it is in Santa Monica or Malibu or wherever else it might be that doesn't have a chain store type ordinance like this. If we were to allow it to happen and we, and we were to change the ordinance at this point, ultimately, we would, we would be affecting the character and the culture of Ojai. And the ordinance, we spent a lot of time, hours and hours, introducing it and having public hearings about it. And I agree, it's, we're not in a position where we want to change it whatsoever, at this point anyway. So with that being said, if you want to make a motion?
I would like to move that no change be made to the formula business ordinance.
Second?
Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Laura?
Yes.
Clapp?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Strobel?
Yes.
Clapp?
Yes. All right, moving on to item number eight. Or seven?
We're skipping six.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah. Item six, I presume has been removed. So we're now on number seven, which is resolution number 13 dash, what will it be?
Twenty-one.
Twenty-one. Determining dates of regular meetings to be canceled for the summer recess of the council. Mr. Clark, do you have any comments on that or do you want to just open it up to discussion or?
We did poll the council and three of you didn't have any preference at all. Okay. So Councilmember Smith had suggested July 9th, August 13th, and September 10th is her preferences. And then I guess Councilmember Clapp has a...
I'm in July 23rd and September 24th.
Well, first of all, we haven't determined if we're going to go dark one time or if we're going to go dark twice. So why don't we? I'm in favor of twice, but I don't know how the rest of the council feel.
How, how does it look for scheduling out the agendas?
Right.
Does it look like we have the luxury of being able to go dark twice?
I would say that the answer is yes, but we need to have a majority the other times.
Right.
So if we end up having less than a majority when we do have the council meeting, that's sometimes a problem if there's a controversial item.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I personally don't have a preference, but I have heard that it would be nice if we canceled September the 24th. There were, there's about three people that I could name that would be impacted.
Impacted, well...
Well, that's what I was thinking.
Cancel the 24th, that would, that would work for about three people.
Well, that's important to know.
Yeah. What I think, what I'm hearing is maybe we should just go through the dates to make sure we will have at least a quorum here for any meetings, number one. That would be three. Four, of course, you could end up with a two-two vote. So, because they're all over the place, the dates, unless, these are the only four we're considering.
Right. Well, first of all, I have no plans, so I will be here whenever...
No plans.
Whenever, and I think Carlin's the same way.
That's it, I have no plans.
You don't have to worry about us.
Bygwyze, I have no plans either.
Really?
Okay.
My goodness.
So now it's going to come down to...
Well, I'm on the 23rd of July because I have plans.
You have plans.
Cancel the 23rd?
Yes.
Cancel the 23rd.
And I'm fine with the 24th of September.
I was going to say, I'm still going to request that we cancel the 24th.
The 34th, 24th of September?
Even though I'm here.
Well, okay. I know that August 13th and September 10th was what I was looking at, but as long as we have a quorum, or at least we have four people, we can do business, so.
That's great.
So I'm not that concerned about that at this point. But we said, did we say yes to going dark twice? Yes?
Yes.
You're saying the amount of business we have should, should allow for two, two dark dates? The other thing, September 24th is so late, I mean, everybody who has Alaska or Vicog, you know, all the other commissions we serve are back in business full swing, you see, once it comes to September. So that would be my only consideration as far as if people are actually going to be out of town on September 24th for that week. But again, it's hard to put in all the considerations. So I would definitely like, let's see, actually, July 9th would be very good for me, or August 13th. Or if every, if there's three of us who want September 24th, sure. So that's three.
All right, well, your, your preference would be the first being July the 9th. Anybody else interested in July the 9th? No?
No.
Okay, and yours? Councilwoman Clapp?
It's 23rd.
July 23rd?
And I'm fine with the 24th, that's, it doesn't matter. Any of those, I don't care.
July 23rd?
Okay, so we've got, we've got July...
It's fine, okay.
We've got July 9th and July 23rd. Does that sound?
No, that's awfully close together. Those are two meetings.
Meetings in July.
What about...
Wait, July 23rd, September 24th? That's not close together.
No, I said July, I said July 9th and July 23rd.
That's, that's a whole month without meetings, that's not, I wouldn't advise that.
Okay. Well, you guys can battle it out which day.
If we were, if we're going to cancel two, I would recommend we cancel July 23rd and September 24th.
Done.
Okay.
Everybody happy with that?
Is that agreeable? That's it.
Okay.
All right, you don't need a mo, do you need a motion on that?
Yes.
There's a resolution.
Okay, all right, well then let's, let's make a motion and we'll vote on it. It's going to be July 23rd and August 24th, or September 24th.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make the motion.
Okay.
I would move that we adopt resolution number 1321, canceling regular council meeting dates of July the 23rd and September the 24th.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, roll call, please.
Laura?
Yes.
Clapp?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Strobel?
Yes.
Clapp?
Yes. All right, moving on to item number eight on our agenda, recreation reorganization. Mr. Clark?
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the city council. We did get a little bit of a primer on this when we did the recreation budget earlier today. But one thing I wanted to highlight is that we're actually spending a lot more on parks and recreation than we ever have. We're just spending it differently. The reason I say that is that in the past, we were not putting general fund money into our infrastructure and now we are. So in the current budget, we have $482,000 of park and recreation-related capital improvements proposed. And about $340,000 of that comes from the general fund contribution to the capital improvement fund. But what we are doing in the reorganization is spending less on administration. And I think that we've probably been administratively heavy in the past. So I just wanted to go through a few topics and then respond to whatever questions you might have or whatever input the public might have about the reorganization. First of all, as, as part of this process, we did some external comparisons. And I've included some graphs in your paper that show where we stood in terms of staff as a percentage of budget before and where we stand now. And clearly before, the amount of staff that we had for the size of our budget, when we're looking at departments of cities our side or serving areas our size, was a little bit heavy. And with the reorganization, it's more in the average. The second comparison that we made was the amount of general fund subsidy. And again, we're looking at cities that are similar in size to us or in service area, which is the whole Ojai Valley. And in terms of general fund subsidy, we were sort of at the high end of average and now we're fairly low average. So that shows me that at least as compared to other communities, we're somewhat in the norms. And that was part of the discussion that we had with the, with the Recreation Commission. The basic change that we have is that we've eliminated the Recreation Director position and we've assigned Mr. McClary to have, to use 25% of his time fulfilling some of the duties of the Recreation Director. And then we've either eliminated some or shared them with other staff. And I think that we've found during the period of time that we've done this, that we've been able to cover all the bases, that we've been able to adequately staff the commission and that the commission has supported the structure that we've, that we've proposed. Another thing that we did is that we had the Finance Director analyze the fees. And I know that the question about how much money our fees should generate is one of the bigger issues that's been out there. And what we discovered is that our fees cover the direct costs of our programs. So the programs that are on our recreation brochure or the sports programs that we offer cover the costs of the staff that teach those classes or lead those programs and also the materials and supplies that are associated with those programs. But you could legally also increase the fee enough to cover recreation administration or even city hall administration. And we haven't done that. We don't cover either department overhead or city overhead. And actually, I think if we were to do that, we would price ourselves out of the market because there's, there's not enough elasticity of price to push the prices up enough to cover those costs. But that is the typical situation in community recreation. The administrative overhead is really what we use our taxpayer money to provide services to our taxpayers with, but they are covering the direct costs. Another topic that we looked at is the non-resident fee. And we think that the way the non-resident fee has been structured recently has actually been a detriment to attendance in our programs. About 40% of, on average, of the participants in our recreation classes and sports leagues are non-residents. And in order for those classes and leagues to have enough participants, we have to have those non-resident participants. So really, it's a benefit to our own local residents that we have fees that are affordable to non-residents so that we have enough people to cover the class. Secondly, if we do have fees that are so high that they discourage attendance, we actually reduce our revenues. And if we have fees that are lower, we generate more revenues because we have more participants. So with all that in mind, we spent quite a bit of time talking about how we should restructure our fee. What I didn't include in the staff report and would like to sort of summarize for you is that the, the new proposed fee of 5% is in line with the non-resident fee that's being charged in other communities that have non-resident fees. So there's a lot of, there's a number of other cities that are in the same circumstance that we're in, which is that the core city is smaller than the urban area and the service area therefore is bigger than the core city. And they often charge a non-resident fee, but it's more along the lines of the 5% that's being proposed now rather than the structure that we had before. Again, I wanted to mention that the area that the council has identified as being the most neglected, not only in our Public Works Department, but also in Parks and Recreation, is our facilities. And a lot of our facilities are quite rundown. And it's true that we have been able to get grants and donations. For example, the Sarzati Restrooms were paid for by grants and donations. The tennis court improvements were paid for by donations. The skateboard park was largely paid for by donations. But even having said that, many of our facilities are in a somewhat deteriorated state. And so I think our new philosophy of deferring some of our general fund money into the infrastructure fund and paying for streets as well as park and recreation facilities is going to vastly improve recreation for our whole community, just because we have better facilities, whether we're the ones who are the users or whether someone else is the user of them. And then the final topic is the structure of the commission. And I've, I meet every week with Steve and Sophocles and we talk about what the commission's doing and what's going to be on their agenda and how they've responded to it. And their impression and my impression from talking to them is, is that the commission process is improving. And what I mean is I think that for a while, the commission was sort of thinking in a silo and they were sort of protective of themselves as being a separate entity, not part of the city. And I think more and more, they're seeing that they're part of a bigger picture and that they're part of a team. And, and we do need to emphasize that. And I think our code, the way that it describes the Recreation Commission, probably merits review at some point in time to make more clear, what is the scope of this commission? And that they are advisory to you and that you have, just like in our conversation with the Planning Commission, a slightly different perspective. You know, they're, they're experts in recreation or people who've developed a lot of knowledge in recreation and they're able to convey to you the recreation needs of the community. But you then have to balance the recreation needs of the community with the planning needs and the public works needs and the public safety needs and all that. And so you're likely to, to both come up with very good decisions, but not the same decision on things. So certainly, I would think the commission would be open to that kind of discussion and it would be worthy of having. So I think that pretty much covers what we have on the recreation reorganization. We'd be glad to answer your questions or respond publicly.
Thank you, Mr. Clark. Any questions of the staff or comments by the council?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes. Mayor Proton?
This is just my wander, wandering, well, whatever, can't speak anymore. We have a recreation department and we have a Parks and Recreation Commission. Is that still appropriate to have a Parks and Recreation Commission? Or are the functions of the park mainly already under public works? And if that's the case, should we redefine the Recre, Parks and Recreation Commission?
So I did look at several ordinances that are, that other communities have for either recreation commissions or Parks and Recreation commissions. And one thing I observed is that even if it's called the Recreation Commission, a big part of its scope is to advise you on what recreation... a big part of its scope is to advise you on what recreational facilities are needed.
Okay.
So I think it would be, it'd be fine to change it to Recreation Commission. But it should clearly define the scope as being all things related to recreation, including recreational facilities.
Yeah.
I think that there's other aspects of the ordinance that are kind of misleading in a way. You know, it talks about the commission directing staff and making decisions on money. And really, they don't direct staff. You direct staff through me, and they don't make decisions on money. They make recommendations to you about money, and you make decisions on money. So I think things like that would help the commission be more effective.
With cleanup.
And make them feel better. You know, it feels really bad to think you're responsible for something and to think the community thinks you're responsible for something and to not be in the loop. And so I think there's some misalignment there that we probably should engage the commission in a conversation.
When would the interest?
One of the things that I've thought for quite some time is that it should be the Recreations Commission and be charged with putting together the recreation's programs or requesting those programs, which they believe our community needs, and then overseeing those. And that anything to do with parks or facilities would be under Public Works. But the Recreation Commission would be able to direct us in what they need from our facilities in order to put those programs together. Then it would be up to us to determine whether or not we can provide that particular, the funding for that facility. I can't think of some, you know, let's say, the Park and Rec, let's say, a Recreation Commission came up and said that they thought that squash should be a program. But in order to do that, the city had to build squash courts. Well, they would come to us, say, we think this is something that our community really needs, and we would like to see us build two squash courts. Well, then it would be up to the council to determine whether we're going to fund the construction of two squash courts. And then we would be funding those programs, which they would put together in terms of the things that the community needs. But I've never felt that they really have any oversight over facilities nor the parks themselves. If the fields need to be improved, well, then they should be coming to us saying the softball fields need to be improved. And that we, working through Public Works, either improve those fields or not, depending on our resources. So that's kind of my thought because I think focusing the, and I'll tell you, Councilman Laura is probably the one that I would turn to most here to make comments because he was on the Parks and Recreation Commission. But it just seems to me that their expertise is in telling us what the community needs for recreation. And then it's up to us to fund those programs and make it possible to do those programs or not be able to fund it and not do the programs. But that's where, to me, it would be very important. Because I really don't know, as I sit here, as on the council, as to what recreation programs this community really wants or needs. And that's where the commission would come in. And I'd appreciate hearing my colleagues' comments about that.
I'd like to finish up what I was, first of all, not first of all, but I commend you on this staff report. It's very comprehensive, very clear. It gave me a lot of information. You know, I just have limited questions I'm asking here. And I just wanted to say that I agree with the commission in supporting staff's recommendation to lower the non-resident fee to five percent surcharge capped at ten dollars. And that's because we need the non-residents to make our programs viable. And that's it, that's all of my comments. I'm done.
Councilwoman Smith?
You know, it's the semantics, I think changing the language, where you're talking about where the commission or future commissioners may have the feeling that they actually control the budget rather than make recommendations should definitely be done. I have trouble just calling a recreation commission because my recreation, I use the parks for recreation. And I think a lot of people do use it. It's the way they recreate. I don't know if you need a particular activity to use our park, you see? And like, certainly things like if park benches need repair, if the, where they have the band concerts, you know. I mean, in a sense, recommendations from Park and Recs would be very helpful in deciding how to spend that money, even if it's not coming from their budget, so to say. And I think it just has, Parks and Recreation, to me, is perhaps, at times, it's not, it's not quite right on. But I think it gives them a scope and of practice and their concern that. So I would hesitate to leave it just to recreations because a lot of people use the parks for recreation.
I just have one other comment, and then I'll go to Councilman Laura. Why do we have to charge people outside the city any surcharge? If they, if we have somebody in the city, a person, that comes into a program or we have somebody outside the city coming in to our program, it's the same thing. It's our same cost. But the more we can get coming in from outside the city, the better off we are. So why do we want to surcharge them at all?
Well, I think the reason that about half the cities do that is because they're, because the residents' tax money is going into recreation and the county's not contributing any money. So the trick is trying to figure out how to, how to collect money for the programs that we provide from outside our corporate boundaries.
But I agree with that, except for the fact it's costing us the same, whether, whether we have the vast majority coming in from outside the city or those in the city. It's, the program is costing us the same. So if we want to maximize participation, why wouldn't we want as many people from outside the city to come in and participate in our Recs, Park and Recreation Department activities? And why would we surcharge them?
And I think actually that was the thought process that went into lowering the fee. You're just lowering it to zero, and we're lowering it to five percent. We're proposing that be lowered to five percent.
There's one way to look at it. If we were breaking even, that it was a self-sustaining department, that'd be one thing. But it's not. It's running at a deficit, and it's being subsidized by the general fund, which is the taxpayer dollars. So the taxpayer's general fund is being eroded by the Recreation Department, thus taking monies away from paving streets and things of that sort. Other things that the money could go to in the community are taken away because it's being subsidized.
Mm-huh.
And that, through the taxpayer, that these facilities are available and the Recreation Department is there. So I think that the five percent surcharge is to, is to say, okay, this is your contribution towards this recreation department from outside of the city because you aren't, you aren't contributing to it through your taxes within the city limits. That's, is that a?
Well, I agree with the concept. Where I'm having a problem is that, that if not surcharging them creates more participation, then the more participants are going to create more revenue, so we spend less from the general fund, than those people that are paying the five percent extra.
Why don't we start with, why don't we start with a five percent and see if it increases registration or takes it up to prior levels before? We also had an economy that's been down as well. So it's hard to know what is, whether it was raising of the fees for outside participants that caused the decline or whether it was the economy or the combination.
Okay.
I had another thought, too. Is there, we may not answer tonight, but putting on our thinking caps, what we would really like is for the county to pay something we can count on for the recreation and parks that we provide for the county's citizens. And we want to provide it. But is there any way that we could twist them a little bit to provide it for, oh, I guess we're unique. You know, we're not like the other cities in the county where they have a big city or they have most of the children, the people who participate in their programs. It's probably eighty or ninety percent city residents, you see.
Do our, do our children that, or adults that participate in program, recreation programs outside the city, do they pay a surcharge?
I, you know, I don't know if the county charges a surcharge. The city of Ventura does. So if they went down to Ventura and participated in a Ventura program, they would.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, it's, it's zero for classes less than twenty-five, five dollars for classes twenty-five to seventy-five, and ten dollar for classes over seventy-five.
Okay.
Which is pretty comparable, you know, it's a little bit calculated differently, but comparable in the scope ours.
Well, I think one of the bottom lines is we need a value-wide recreation district. That's, that's the bottom line. And someday, I hope we can move in that direction because I think that would resolve a lot and potentially raise enough money that we could even have a pool.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I thought, thinking cap offer. One, two, one mechanism, assuming there was money the county would contribute towards recreation, assuming that was so, the mechanism without raising new money would be some form of a joint powers authority. Where, so the city, you know, the city and the county would form, and you can either have just a joint oper, joint exercise of powers run by the county or the city, or you actually form a separate legal entity, Ojai Valley Recreation Authority. And each, the city and the county contribute general fund money into that, which is then pulled and operated as a regional, as a regional entity with no new money, which then could also become, if it was successful, again, if the county had to put the money into it, that could be the, become, become later the recreation district that could then also raise taxes.
Thank you. Councilman Laura?
Yes, I mean, I agree with all your comments about redefining the boundaries and responsibilities of the Parks and Recreation Commission because it is very vague and it, the way I understood is, I was also responsible for knowing which building needed to be repaired, and it was tricky to see in the budget what money was actually going to the facilities, what actually part of Public Works was doing, how to divide that. So on top of not just redefining the responsibilities and our duties, the commission's duties, but also, and I don't know if Suzie could do this, is breaking up the budget so that it could be more of the Public Works and kind of not include that in the Parks and Recreation Commission and just have that clear and defined. And I think we, you've done the study, the, the direct costs, the revenue. So I think that would help. And I think the commission, as I hear, is a lot more happy because there's a lot more communication. I mean, Steve's doing a great job, they're communicating, and they're seeing the positive impact. So I think that we need to have an open dialogue to see what creative ideas we could have for the county to give money. And we were using the CBD, CDBG money also for scholarships. So we were, and that's taken away from the Parks and Recreation Commission. So, I mean, that, just clarifying the roles, the duties, I think that would go really far. And it would start, I mean, we're already starting a good working commission. I think just in general with all the commissions, not just the Parks and Recreation Commission, so.
Yeah, thank you.
I have a question about CDBG. I have a real quick question about, a quick question about CDBG. We lost that, why?
The, we, we lost a portion of it, the portion that was being used for the REV program.
What's the REV program?
It's, I forget what the, what it stands for, but it's scholarships for low-income.
Vouchers for needy families?
Oh, okay.
So, so we did make a proposal to the supervisor's office to have a three-way split. We'd charge one-third the fee to the participant. The city would pay one-third, and the county would pay one-third. We took it from Kane, what was his name? The presidential candidate, you know, nine-nine-nine?
Oh, that guy.
Three-three-three. And, Herman Kane, yeah.
The pizza guy.
Yeah. Anyway, they're, they still have that under consideration. It's a, it's a budget matter for them.
Well, the reason I'm asking, I thought it had to do with economics. So if we were in a value-wide recreation district, we would probably get the CDBG money back.
The CDBG money's being reduced because of the sequester across the country.
Oh, it's not because we don't have enough.
And they're, and at our county level, they're reemphasizing how it's being used. And REV just doesn't come up as a high priority in the way they allocate it. But we still will get money for capital improvements. And so CDBG is in our capital improvement plan on a long-range basis, has been one of the funding sources that we have for recreation improvements.
Thank you. Any further comments for another discussion? Yes, Mayor Protam.
You know, I hate to single out one commission, but I'm going to use them as an example. The Arts and, the Arts Commission, their budget deliberations have to do with specific needs, to purchase public art, to maintain public art, to offer scholarships. None of their budget has to do with the operation or maintenance of the city or its facilities. So I think they're a very good model to use. I wouldn't expect, I really don't expect the Parks and Rec Commission to be burdened with the budget dealing with the operation and maintenance of the city of Ojai. That's beyond the purview. That's us, that's what we do. But if they developed a budget for their specific needs, maybe if they wanted scholarships, they could do it the same as the, the Arts Commission does and present us specific items with a cost attached and say, would the council approve this? And that's what doesn't happen from the other commissions, including the Planning Commission. They're different with what they do. But I would rather see the Parks and Rec Commission take a look at what it would like to fund with its money, whether it be voucher programs or whatever, and submit it to the city council for approval or rejection, but not for the management of the city of Ojai.
So can I, can I just explain what we have done and what we're trying to do budget-wise with the commission? First of all, we surveyed the commission and got them to identify what their highest priorities were. And then when we put together the budget that we proposed to you, the staff budget that we just reviewed this morning, a lot of what they had recommended was built into that budget. So, for example, they wanted to see five-day office hours, we've got that. They wanted to see the game room open, we've got that. They wanted to see more counter assistance and web presence, and we've got that. They wanted to see open activities on Friday nights, and we've got that. So operationally, we've built, to the, to the degree that we could afford to with the subsidy that we have, we built the things that they identified as the highest priorities and staff also agreed were the highest priorities into the budget recommendation you received. But it's a, it's a different process than Arts Commission where they're just kind of independently coming with a separate request. Secondly, what we're starting, and we haven't quite got there a hundred percent, is this idea of a five-year capital improvement plan. So you'll see next week or next meeting when we go through the five-year capital improvement plan that we actually specify that a certain amount of money is going to come from Community Development Block grant, and a certain amount of money is going to come from basically TOT, to, that we want a program for recreation facilities. And so what we want to do is we want to get the input of the commission as to how, you know, if that money actually becomes available over those five years, what should we be spending it on or what do they recommend that the council spend it on? So in some sense, the Park and Recreation Commission or Recreation Commission, whatever we call it, is going to have a bigger impact on the budget than any other commission because they're looking at such a big scope of things. The Planning Commission comes to you and says, you know, they don't have a separate budget for this, but they say, we really need to have the fifth-cycle housing element done, and we really need to have neighborhood district planning. So we're going to be recommending that you spend forty-five thousand dollars on the cycle-five housing element and thirty thousand dollars on neighborhood district planning. So they're having an impact on the budget in their way. HPC is more like Arts Commission. They have specific programs that they're working on as a commission that they'll talk about at the next, at the next workshop. So that's how we build all these different commissions into the budget process within their scope.
I, I think that makes a lot more sense than the way it's been being done personally. Okay. Any other comments or anything on this discussion item? Any other comments or anything on this discussion item? It is a discussion item, so I'm going to ask the public if they have anything.
Well, that's a, real quickly.
Okay.
So these changes are going to, you're going to come back with the changes, the rewrite?
So the proposed recreation budget includes all the operational things that I mentioned. And the proposed capital improvement plan really just includes a couple of years of what the capital expenditures would be. So in the future, we'll have to come back with a more built-out capital improvement program.
But the muni code, the change in the muni code about the definitions?
Yes, if you'd like us to bring back a revision of the definition of the commission, we can do that as a separate item.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
And that had come up because you mentioned that some of the information is outdated. The, for, where are we? The Parks and Rec?
So as part of the reorganization, and also as a response to questions that we got from council members, we looked at the ordinance that forms the commission, and we said, does this really support the commission as it should operate? And I think there's a need to really take a closer look at that and to refine it so that their role is clear and they feel good about what they're doing, and they're a very helpful group to you.
I don't have any speakers' cards on this particular agenda item. Is there anyone wishing to speak? No?
I see a hand.
Hi, Randy.
Are you guys in the dark back there?
It looks like it.
You guys almost fallen asleep, this has been a long day. I'm not saying you guys are boring us back here, but. All right, Randy Haney, Chair of the Recreation and Parks Commission. I just, I want to make a couple of brief comments. First of all, I think one of the fundamental obligations of a city is to provide recreational opportunity and recreational facilities. So I think that that's part of every community and every city's obligation. And how you do that, obviously, is through taxes and, you know, the collections and then the distribution of them. So that's the first thing, I don't think we can lose track of that. The fact that we have a seven-hundred-thousand-dollar or close to that a year budget, and those obligations come from the taxes that we bring in, we shouldn't mistake, or they shouldn't be mistaken as to what their use is for. That's one of the first things I wanted to bring up, if I was clear on that. The second thing is, we talked about the Recreation and Parks Commission. Yet, we're evolving. And, you know, I think I'm on my fifth year. And I'll be honest with you, my first year, I didn't have a clue. And I'd say Savaro was probably in the same boat. Because, one, there's no training, two, there's no brochure. There's nothing that says, this is what you do and how you do it. And so when you start talking about us trying to oversee a budget, we don't even understand Suzie's budget. As much as we try to, we just don't. And I agree, that's not necessarily our job. Okay, I just don't think that is. I think that that's Rob's job, and I think that that's the department staff's job. And I just don't think that that's something that the commission should do. However, what we are is, we're the venue for the community to come and to talk and to receive information and provide information about the recreational facilities and the recreational opportunities. I think that's probably one of the most important things that we do do. Okay? So as long as in any reorganization of that or restructuring or rethought, that we keep that in mind, that our commission should be the voice of the community in regards to recreational opportunities. And again, I don't think we want to get into telling Sophocles how to program his facilities. What we do need to be able to do with Sophocles is, when the community comes and says, we'd like this, this, and this, then that should be something that we, as a group, a commission and a department, come together on and say, please, you know, try and do these for the citizens. And I think that's what we've done well recently, and I think that, most importantly, that's what Steve has done and Sophocles has done since Dale's departure. They've done an incredible job. So I guess getting back to this budget thing again, I don't think as a commission, we want to be a part of that. However, a couple of years ago, we were told to cut the Recreation and Parks budget by a hundred-and-sixty thousand dollars. So when it comes to us, then there is this kind of like, oh, my God, what are we going to do? When the reality is, that shouldn't even have been brought to us. Period. Just, that shouldn't, you know, it should have been a discussion that there might be budgetary cuts to the Parks Department, and the forum should have been a discussion about what was going to be cut or what revenues were going to be enhanced to make that. So again, that's all I'm saying is from a commission standpoint. One, the commission, I believe, is doing well. I think that there's a lot more communication between you, between Rob, and definitely between Steve and Sophocles. And we're not being led by the recreation leader, which we were in the past, because, again, we thought that's how it worked. What we are is, we're being led by the citizens. And we're being led by all the activities and all the things that the department needs to provide its citizens, so.
Thank you, Randy, thank you for your comments. Thank you for your public service on the Park and Recreation Commission. It's very important. Anybody else wishing to address us on this item? I don't see anybody, so I'll bring it back to the council. Do you have enough information? Or is there anything that we need to do? Okay?
Well, actually, I'm just going to repeat myself, because I want to be clear. When we talk about a seven-hundred-thousand-dollar budget for the Rec Department, that, the management of that amount of money, I don't believe is the commission's burden. I want to be clear that they're not responsible for the administration of the city. So they don't have to be concerned about seven-hundred thousand. What I would like for them to be concerned on, is concerned with, is keeping council advised of what is needed in the community. It's our job to decide how and if we can fund it.
I would agree, and I don't think that's ever been anything other than the intent of the council. However, I really believe that the commission was being directed by the director, who had a different concept on that.
I agree.
So enough said on that. So things are better now.
Things are better.
Anything else, Mr. Clark?
I would, it's time to pursue with the county either a follow-up from that letter or perhaps go down our attorney Fletcher's suggestion. I mean, I don't know if their budget is in good shape this year or what, but it would be really great if.
Your mic.
It would be wonderful if we could pursue an amount from the county for offering recreation to all their residents.
I wrote a letter to.
I know, it's a very good one.
Yeah, I wrote a letter to Steve Bennett with regard to that, and I don't believe we ever got an answer from that.
I talked to his office, and they said it's still on the table, but it has to be vetted through their budget process with the rest of the supervisors. So I expect an answer by July first.
Well, I may call him and just follow up on it.
Yeah.
Captain Kenny, Chief Kenny, do you know if the budget's in good shape this year for the county? Or, yes, in general, I mean, not just your department.
I had heard that it was in fairly good shape.
Good, okay. That's always helpful.
Sure, I'm the expert to speak on that.
No, but, well, you would hear about it, you know, if it wasn't, right.
From the CEO, had made a presentation, and that was my understanding.
Great, thank you.
So on the idea of a broader county contribution, I've also talked to the supervisor's office about that a number of times. And what they've told me is they're structured, their Parks and Recreation function is structured as an enterprise fund. And so they have certain parks, like campgrounds and stuff like that, that generate money. And that's it, that's all they get, that's their budget. So it's a very, they don't really provide recreation programs. They let other people use their facilities for recreation programs. But they don't put any county general fund monies into recreation programs.
Well, what about the dog park? They're in the middle of a big rehaul, and they're putting down new ground cover and all, and they're keeping up that, and I would call that a recreation program.
Or the ball field in Oakview, they have to be maintaining that. The Little League program, I don't know if that's self-supporting.
Right, but what they've said is that the money for that comes from the campgrounds and things that are profitable. So they have park facilities that generate money, and they have park facilities that need expenditures. But what they were saying is that they don't put general fund money.
I got you, okay, all right.
I have a real quick thing to add about training. I was going to mention that on the next item, but I think that training of commissioners is something that has kind of been neglected. I think you just get plunked down in the chair, and you're just kind of, without any sort of compass. And I don't know how to do something about that, what process we could take to have a simple introduction, not just the Brown Act, but other, what are your responsibilities as a commissioner?
Mr. Fletcher? Mr. Mayor, members of the council. In past lives, I've run a joint new commissioner training program with the city clerks, where the clerk, the clerk, I had a clerk who loved making brochures, so we had a brochure on. Very, very good, she was very, very good. But I mean, so basically, what it means to be, you know, from the clerk's side and the organizational, operational side, not on the substantive side, that's staff's responsibility. But in terms of, you're here a commissioner, here's the things you have to do, everything from set a hundred forums to how to conduct public meetings, I would be involved with Brown Act and Confucianism trainings. We, I have a pretty nice new commissioner training program that we could put together.
Do you think we could, if other council members would be into that, I'd like to.
Yes, definitely.
I think that'd be great.
Well, the clerk and I talk about.
That'd be great.
I'll work with Mr. Clark and we'll come up with some programs.
Excellent, thank you.
And Mr. Mayor, I have one final comment. And I do this, it's hard for me not to grin when I'm doing this, this is a tongue-in-cheeker. You know, to encourage the county Board of Supervisors, the same as our citizens, appear in this council chamber at that desk under unscheduled items and basically tell us what they want, the same thing can happen at the Board of Supervisors meeting. So I would recommend that you keep that in mind and see if you can get some help by showing up at their meetings, show that you have an interest to get some help for the city.
Okay, thank you.
We have a lot up here, we want a pool.
Hook our pool.
All right, Mr. Clark, do you need anything else with regard to this agenda item? Okay, we're going to move on to number nine, which is changes to the city of Ojai commissions. This was an item that I specifically had requested that we get put on the agenda. And it had to do with the makeup of our commissions with regard to outside residents on commissions such as the Planning Commission and the Historic Preservation Commission, not so much the Arts Commission or the Park and Recreation Commission. So, Mr. Clark?
Well, this is an item that we've discussed a number of times. And so we've just listed some options, which are, the most extreme would be to restrict appointments to residents only. Another option that's less restrictive is to reduce the number of non-residents from three to two, or to have some specific boundary within which the non-residents would have to come. And then a final option was to make the resident members voting members and the non-resident members advisory only. So really, we just sort of pulled out the options that have been looked at in the past to remind you of what those are.
One of the reasons that I began thinking about this was because we're looking at that new board that's part, that we're going to be pulling out from the building codes. What's it called?
Building Appeals Board.
Building Appeals Board. And it had the makeup of that board, but it never said that the people on that board were going to be mandated to be citizens of Ojai, which I believe they need to be. So with that, you take a look at the Planning Department and those commissioners without considering at all the personality of the commissioners on there. I was on there, and there was a lot of good input by people that lived outside the city, as there is now. But if you're looking at commissions that have an impact on the city itself, then what would, what input do people that live outside the city, specifically when it comes to the Planning Department? What input do they, what input do they have that's essential to that commission that a citizen of Ojai would not necessarily have? And it's, I brought it up just for discussion. Any comments by, I don't have any speakers card, but there's a lot of people here, so I'm sure people want to speak to this.
Okay.
But do you, anybody else want to make a comment?
I was just going, we have a list of things to consider here, and I just wanted to say in the beginning, the last bullet point. Make the resident members voting members and the non-resident members advisory only. I absolutely object to that.
Why? Just curious.
So we want to have, we would allow a non-resident to sit on our board, but not have a voice? Read the bullet point.
No, I'm reading it, I was just curious, why?
If we're going to appoint them to our commission, as far as I'm concerned, it's for the purpose of expressing their voice. I have no interest in having someone serve and do the work on one of our commissions and yet not have a vote.
Okay, any other comments? No? I don't have any speakers cards, but there's a lot of people here, so I presume somebody wants to speak. Come forward, please, if you could state your name for the record.
George Berg, Foothill Road, Ojai. And by Ojai, that means not in the city, it's part of the county. My experience with this issue began back in the mid-1990s, when I did a lot of work with the city and with the county, supporting the libraries and keeping the Ojai Library and Oakview and Miners Oaks from closing and reconfiguring the County Library Commission. At that time, we had a valley-wide vote on supporting the libraries. And the first time, we failed, and we analyzed the voting from the Ojai Valley. And we tried to ascertain who felt like they were part of the city of Ojai. Not speaking politically, but who characterized themselves as being part of Ojai. And we found that more people from outside the city felt like they were part of Ojai than the eight-thousand population of the city. Similarly, the usage of the Ojai Library serves many more people from the unincorporated area than it does from the city, which is reasonable, since the unincorporated area is thirty thousand versus eight thousand. Many of the issues in the city, for example, dark skies and lighting, really overlap that boundary. Planning does in many ways. I've spoken both before, the City Planning Commission, the County Planning Commission, on these same issues. I think it's important, as part of the uniqueness of Ojai, to draw from the rest of the valley the expertise and the knowledge and the participation of some people from outside the city. I think the current idea of having the majority of the commissions be from within the city with a minority from outside the city is a good balance. And my experience in working on the library for six or seven years was that we had as many or more people from outside the city contributing as though they had full-time jobs working for the city in order to solve that problem. I think it's valuable to the city, and it's valuable to the area outside the city to have support for the businesses and the community of which are inside the city. For example, supporting Star Market, supporting the Oaks. If they feel like they're part of the city, and I think that should continue, thanks.
Thank you, George. Anyone else wishing to address the council? Okay. Okay, we'll bring it back to council for questions or comments. Anybody have any comments?
I have a question for staff. Historically, have, have there been always about three non-residents in both of these commissions? Or mostly all vacancies? I mean, is there, has, has there really been an issue with non-residents being on these commissions?
We haven't been here that long. Maybe Carlin probably has more historical.
I don't think it's, I don't think it's mandated that three have to be. It's just no more than three can be. I mean, they could all be city residents now. I'll tell you that, one of the reasons I put this on and why it specifically only was addressed to two commissions particularly, which is Planning and Historic Preservation, was because I'd been contacted by several people who said, what in the world do we have people on Historic Preservation? And it principally came out of the, the windshield survey, who aren't on, do not live in the city, but are gonna dictate within the city as to who's going to be considered a possible significant historic resource of our city, when they have nothing at stake in that. And then the other was, that I've had comments of people that say, well, why do we have a planning commission that are making decisions about us in Ojai when that same decision doesn't affect them whatsoever? And why don't we just have people on that commission who have a stake in the decisions that they make, when the people outside the city have absolutely no stake in the, in the height regulations or anything, because they're not governed by the laws that they are administering, that they're administering when they're on the commission? That's the reason that I brought it forward. Councilwoman Smith?
I, I have heard that too, but in fact, I think what Mr. Berg said is the fact that most people who live in the Ojai Valley considers themselves part of Ojai. They shop and do business in the city of Ojai. The look of Ojai, everything about the city does affect them. I think it's a, it has, as to, it, it, it's a bit of a vacuous argument. I think the average person, and I'll tell you, some of them don't even know if they live in the city or the county. I mean, as candidates, you probably had the experience of saying, yes, thank you, I voted for you. And in fact, you know they live in the county. So there's a very, very, it's, it's not a strict line. We also increase our pool of good candidates. Historic Preservation, that particularly, I mean, we have a very strong commission now with people within that background. Our Planning Commission, it's, you know, when I started going to city meetings and planning, I mean, we had some wonderful people who loved the city, but March Fay and stuff, she'd say, I like this, this proposal. Well, she doesn't, she wasn't an architect, she wasn't a, a landscape architect, she wasn't a builder. I mean, if you look at who we have now, we have a nice selection of people who are actually in some aspect of building or gardening or whatever. And I'd like to draw from that, from that crowd. I do not feel that they don't love the city of Ojai. And I think they spend their tax dollars in the city of Ojai. So I think that argument is, is it specious? Is that the right word, did I pronounce that right? Spacious, specious? It, it doesn't hold much water when you go down to the next level.
Any other comments?
I have a comment. I think one of the things is we're four and a half square miles, we're so tiny, you know? I think it does make it kind of difficult. But I understand the arguments that Mayor Blatts is making. I think somebody making decisions about building codes and things of that sort, or recommendations about building codes. You know, I think it is, it tends to be something I, I believe should be left to people that live within the city limits. But right now, to be honest, we have some people outside of the city limits on the, on the Planning Commission right now and the Historic Preservation, who are phenomenally good. And I would hate to see them leave right now. So if we were to change it, I would wanna have it changed by attrition. As people leave, then we change it, if we do choose to change it. And going from seven to five, I've never understood why there's seven anyway, but I, I'm kind of ambivalent about that. But I do think one suggestion is a really good one, and we really should valid, we really should consider, is limiting it to the Ojai Unified School District boundaries. Because right now, somebody could live in Casitas Springs and be on the Planning Commission, or they could live in Bora Bora, for that matter, in the weekend here. There's no restriction there. So I, I really think if nothing else, we should have at least a boundary from which it has to be drawn from. And I think the OUSD boundary would be a great one.
Match up with theirs, yeah.
So if we were to change it, I really think that we should do it by attrition, not by, by gutting the commissions as they exist right now. Because right now, I think they're exceptional commissions, some of the best we've ever had. And, and part of that is because of people that aren't in the city.
And especially Historic Preservation, you're just not, in such a tiny city, how many people are you gonna find who have that kind of insight and have that?
Craig Walker doesn't live in the city.
No, exactly.
What an incredible person.
I know, exactly.
So I really hesitate, but if it's the will of the council to change it, again, I'd do it with attrition.
Well, keep in mind, I, I brought this forward only because there were people that it, in the community that were concerned enough about it that I felt it was important that we discussed it. Quite frankly, for the 10 years that I was on the Planning Commission, I didn't know who lived in the city and who didn't live in the city. It just never even crossed my mind whether, as we were deliberating on various projects, whether the, whether the commissioner was from the city or not. And I never felt that there was any difference in the way that, that commissioners living outside the city or inside the city deliberated or, or treated any different. And quite frankly, I think some of our very best commissioners right now, on not only the Historic Preservation Commission, but on the Planning Commission, don't live in the city. So I'm not here to, you know, you know, take the banner to wanna change it. I just thought that it, that enough people had contacted me, that I felt it was important for us to talk about it. And, and, and then to just see whether there's anything that we wanna change. And if nothing more, to now bring it out into the open so that if there's more people that wanna voice an opinion that don't happen to be here tonight because of the late hour, they can contact any one of us to talk about it further.
Mr. Mayor, so what I'm hearing is, and I agree with Councilwoman Clapp, we could certainly limit it to the Ojai Unified School District boundaries, which go all the way up to Summit School. And all the way down to, you know, that, that would be, if we want a boundary for quote, non-city residents, that could certainly coincide with OUSD. And with that, I, I agree with, with the mayor. Serving and seeing the committees and how they work, they all love Ojai. So I have no problem in keeping quote, non-city residents on counts, on commissions.
Mayor Blatts?
Yes, Councilman Lara. I just have a comment too, in that regard of our non-resident commissioners. I like the diversity, the fact that we could get different perspectives from different places on the, on our ordinance. But it ultimately comes to us in terms of, if there's any policy changes, we have to look at it. So we have to give the okay, our recommendation. So I think that, that having different perspectives on commission is good for us to look at and not keep us inside a bubble. And then ultimately, the city council members all have to live in the city, so they ultimately have to decide what's good for the city and what's not. But we need, we need, we need different opinions and, and we just can't have just similar opinions. Not that there is similar opinions, just in the city limits, but we, it just, it's, it's nicer to have a bigger pool, so. I would, I would, and I do like the suggestion with limiting the non-residents to the, the school boundary, you know? I think that's a great suggestion.
Keep in mind that, that we always have that option to limit it to whatever boundary we want, because ultimately, there's an interview process and it comes forward to the council for approval. And if somebody lived in Ventura and applied for one of our commission positions, I really don't think that probably a separate, I can't even imagine however outstanding that person might be, that we would think it was appropriate to have a Ventura resident on our Planning Commission, as an example. So I mean, we do have the ability to limit it by the applicant. So whether we, we wanna formally make it whatever the school district boundaries are or not, I honestly don't think that's necessary. Okay, all right.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I have comments.
Ms. Mayor, pro temp.
Depending on the issue that happens to be popular or active in the, the city, often that will put a spotlight on one particular commission or another. To think that we need to change our structure of our commissions because of issues that have brought attention to one commission or another, I think is flawed thinking. If we do intend to change the structure of our commissions, I don't support doing it to just Planning, just Historic. If we're gonna change the structure, we change it across the board. Just because Planning and Historic Preservation has been in the spotlight recently doesn't mean that Arts and Parks and Rec won't be in the same situation in a year from now. So I, whatever we do, if we consider changing the structure, I'd like to see it applied to all the commissions. I don't believe Ojai functions in a vacuum. Our, we have so many people that live outside the city that give us such incredible support. I think we would, we would hurt ourselves by excluding what the community is willing to get. If we decide that we need to have only residents serve on the commissions of the city of Ojai, we can appoint only residents. And that would leave us an option if two years from now, we see that we need to do it differently. We don't have to go back and change the code again. Right now, without doing anything, we can appoint all residents to our commissions. We don't have to do a thing. As far as a boundary, we've had applications from as far away as Camarillo. I don't know where you've had them from, but I know we've had one from Camarillo. Can we just choose not to appoint someone that far removed from the city? Or do we need to actually have a boundary? Would we be discriminating?
No, it's a political process, you have the absolute discretion. As long as you're not discriminating based on race, gender, orientation, you're totally fine.
So, so even as to the boundary, we determine that. Traditionally or currently, the mayor and mayor pro temp make the appointments until the...
Make the recommendations.
Thank you, make recommendations and then the process changes. That's what we have now, as far as I'm concerned, that works with me. And if, if our idea is that we should have all residents, then we can make our recommendations be residents. But I think we would limit ourselves in doing that. And I, I think that we would, if, if we go too much to isolating ourselves, we set up those, those boundaries that could backfire on us and all of the support that we've had from people outside the city could stop.
All right, then I think the consensus is we leave it as it is.
If it ain't broke, don't fix it.
All right, we're gonna adjourn as the Ojai City Council and convene as the Ojai Redevelopment Successor Agency. And I'll take a motion on the consent calendar items 10A through 10B.
Soon as I can find it, I'll make your motion.
I got it.
Okay, I would move to approve the consent calendar items 10A, B as submitted.
I'll second that.
Okay, any discussion?
I'm, I'm sorry, I should have abstained. I did not attend the meetings of May 4th.
Then I'll make the motion.
Well, I only have to abstain those minutes.
Oh, okay.
So, so the motion is still to approve the consent calendar as submitted.
Okay, but you wanna be able to vote on 10A, so we're gonna, I'll ask that you amend it to just be for 10A.
Okay, or I can just clarify abstain when she does the roll call.
I'd rather have you be able to vote on the warrants. So do you wanna amend your motion to just be 10A only?
I can vote on the warrants and abstain on the minutes.
Right.
Mr. Mayor, it's appropriate on, on a consent agenda, people can just abstain on individual items.
Then we have a, we have a motion in a second. Any discussion? Okay, roll call.
Lara?
Yes.
Clapp?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Strobel? Yes, and abstain on 10B. Blatts?
Yes. Okay, we're gonna adjourn as the Ojai Development Successor Agency, reconvene as the Ojai City Council. Any reports from council members tonight? Councilman Lara?
No, nothing.
Councilwoman Smith, anything? Councilwoman Clapp? No. Mayor pro temp, Strobel? No?
No, I'll just comment that I would really love to say that I missed you guys so much when I was gone.
We don't believe it.
But I'd be lying. It was so good to take a, a break and, and to drive across the country. The only, I think, I've told everyone now, but the only stressful part was that I was driving through Oklahoma City when the tornado hit. So I just tucked myself in behind an 18-wheeler, 'cause I figured he can see way better than I can. That was the only, it was a wonderful trip. Now I'm back in red.
And you're back safely, that's the important thing. Mr. Clark?
I'll pass.
Okay. Mr. Fletcher?
Nothing, sir.
Chief Kenny?
The traffic collision rate that I told you first quarter was up 21%. We were gonna concentrate on that, so we brought it down to six, 6% from the deputies' efforts. So we're gonna continue to pay you back on that and hopefully keep, keep that traffic collision rate down. But other than that, that's all I got.
All right, thank you. Steve, do you have anything? Okay, Suzie?
Nothing, sir.
No? Mr. Grant, I see you coming forward.
One very, very brief one, I know it's getting late. And I know we didn't get to use the lights tonight, that's a pretty interesting look over there. I did wanna mention that this weekend, we did start running the trolley out to Lake Casitas. So that started on Saturday, it was a pretty big day, I guess, out of Lake Casitas anyways. We had pretty minimal ridership, but I think we're working a lot of techniques with Lake Casitas to better market it and make sure we get more riders. So it was kind of expected the first day would take a little while to get it moving. And then secondly, I thought I'd mention that at the end of Signal Road, where the new park is starting up with Ojai Valley Land Conservancy, we're working with them to kind of refurbish the end of the road there. You know, it's an old gate and a bunch of old signs and that kind of thing, so. So we have some money in a recycling fund to get a nice recycled plastic sign, which will recap all of those different signs we have there, as well as paint up the end. And, and we're even trying to help them a little bit with grading out the road, a little bit, things too, so.
All right.
Thought I'd mention those.
Thank you, yes.
Before you go away, Shelf Road runs through a portion of, of the land that the Ojai Land Conservancy has purchased, correct?
It touches upon it, right.
All right. So it's not a part of that?
You know, I wouldn't know the exact borders, but I think that the road that we have, we've always maintained the road at the end of Signal, and it goes quite a ways over and then it becomes county maintenance after that. So you can see there's signs up that say where it's city maintained. And I know when you go to that back, I'd guess maybe a quarter mile from the end of Signal Road, there's an, an area where they've put a new kiosk open up and they've got some new trails there. And that's what their, their primary focus is back there.
Do we have, for some reason, I was thinking that, do we own Shelf Road? Was it deeded to us by the county?
I'm not sure about the deed, I think there's something where half of it is owned by the property owners that are on the downhill side, then half of it's owned by the city on the other side. I'd have to check in the, in actual ownership, though.
Okay, and what I'm getting at is maybe we can do some, some improvement on Shelf Road that would... complement the land purchase.
Sounds like he's on it. Great.
We're doing those initial things you just mentioned. We're also considering, I know that park, we're concerned there might be some limited parking, and if we could possibly move the gate, if we see the real need for it, we could possibly push the gate down the road a bit. But the grading of the road and so on is done by the County Ventura for fire clearance. The Fire Protection District handles that. Okay?
Thank you.
All right, thanks.
Sophocles, you have anything tonight?
Just one comment.
Come on up, so everybody at home can hear you.
Yeah. We just started Friday Night Dodgeball, about maybe three weeks back, and you're all invited to come. It's for a family, so council is hoping to come out and do a little dodgeball with us. Ready?
Sounds like a dunk tank.
Yeah.
How old could the participant be?
Well, actually, yeah, you're probably all over the age limit. It's really fourth through eighth grade.
Oh, I couldn't believe that.
But I'm just, it actually was intended to be a family thing, so, but it's, of course, materialized into just, you know, nine to 14, 15-year-old kids that come out right now. But we would like to be, it to be more family style, so we'll see what happens. It's still a work in progress, that program.
Good. Well, thank you for, thank you for your hard work.
Oh, thanks.
I hear a lot of good things about the rec department right now, and it goes a long way to what you're doing and what Steve McClary's doing, so thanks to both of you very much.
Yeah, well, thanks a lot, too. We appreciate your support, and we're proud of the things that are happening there as well.
Well, thank you. Rhonda?
No comments.
All right. We're going to now go into a closed session. It's a conference with Labor Negotiator under Government Code Section 54957.6. Is there going to be any kind of an announcement afterwards?
No, there won't. No announcement.
Okay.